Are we waiting on one there?
Yeah.
Have we checked?
This is yours.
I have not.
Yeah.
We still have a minute to go.
Call the meeting to order for the work session?
Online?
She's, I thought she said we were.
We're good.
Okay, uh, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, justice for all.
Okay. Welcome to the, uh, board work session with OSB Training. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, you know, Chair Mattingly, uh, you know, Superintendent Gardner and Greg Arton, the Public Schools Board. Yeah, I have to tell you, this is a naturalizing moment for me because I'm your neighbor. I grew up right over the river. I used to, I lived in Corvallis and I spent ten years on the Corvallis Board. And so, just great to, I don't know, working with my neighbors. I went to the Columbia Board, I went to the Alcee Board, now I get to work on the GAPS Board, which is really great. Quickly I get to work in Central Alabama too. So, I like working with folks that are close to me because I have friends that have kids in your schools. And so, I know that you have an impact on those kids, so I am being able to work with you, keep coming close to me. So, that's what it's all about. Um, let's see if slides work. There's the cover slide. Let's get through that. This always happens when you change platforms. There may be format errors in this. Um, I think, well, we don't know how, who's online. So, let's go through names. I'm on board. Yeah, where'd you go to high school? Where'd you grow? And then I want to know, why are you on the school board? And you can go in any order you like.
Want to go right to left? You want to go first, Stephanie?
Oh, sure. Okay, um, so I am Stephanie Lunsford. I am newly on the board, just sworn in a few weeks ago. And I went to high school at Crescent Valley in Corvallis. And I'm on the board because I felt it was time to give to my community and just, this seemed like a natural progression. So, yeah. Yeah.
I'm Chris McLaughlin. I'm also just new on the board, so I have one meeting behind me at this point. I went to high school in Madison in Portland. And, uh, yeah, I don't think it's Madison anymore. I think they've changed the name. On Eighty Second Street.
Is it Ida B. Wells?
I would remember Ida B. Wells. It's somebody I had never really heard of. Oh, please, yes. We'll need to know this answer before we can go on. I'm on the board because I have a great interest.
Oh, it's McDaniel. McDaniel High School.
All right.
Leotis v. McDaniel.
Otis.
Leotis.
Oh, Leotis. Okay. I've spent my life in public education and I thought I would have something to offer this board and the community. I really love Albany and the schools and the kids and it seemed like a good place for me.
Look, before we move on, why?
Why?
Why didn't it seem like a good place for you?
Because it's really, one of my top concerns in the world is public education. And I, I thought, well, maybe it's time for me to, instead of saying, oh, they're doing that, I, maybe I could show up and be part of it and be helpful, more constructive. Yeah.
Oh, because the mic.
Okay, then I will stay right here. And I'll try to make eye contact.
Uh, I'm Ryan Mattingly. This is my, beginning of my third year, so I've been in the middle of my first term. On the board, I went to high school at Sheldon High School down in Eugene, same high school as Justin Herbert. Uh, although not at the same time. Uh, I'm on the board because, so I, like Chris, I spent my whole career in public education. I was a special programs director here in Albany for a lot of years. I was forced into retirement due to illness early on, but I felt like I still had a lot to give and a lot of experience. And honestly, if you go back three years, you look, I look around the district office and the people that I worked with for fifteen years were mostly gone. We lost a lot of institutional memory in a really short period of time. And so, I thought if I could get on the board and help bring that kind of back, that would do us a lot of good. And I sort of feel like it has done that, so I feel good about that. But that was my main driver is, there's just a lot of things that were happening in the district and I felt like people that were leading it didn't know the history and didn't know why we did the things we did. And maybe made some mistakes as a result, so.
Sure, sure. Good on you. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Brad Wilson.
Did you get in this chair? How did you get here? Tell your story.
So, Andy Gardner, Superintendent of the GAPS District, Greater Albany District. This is beginning my fourth year. And I went to high school in John Day, Oregon, Grant Union High School. I was a fighting prospector, graduated with about eighty kids. And why am I here? I had known many people that had worked here in Albany and, and had been somewhat close to them. There had been a time when I drove through Stateon to be a teacher and a coach. And of course, I knew educators in this district and had continued to know them. I served for a long time in that district. COVID shook me loose a little bit. And looked for a change at that point. This job was open at that time and I thought to finish my career, I would come here and, and work in this district. I was really proud of the systems we built in Stateon. And want to see that we can come in a very different way with what we know here to some level of congruence on that.
Thank you, sir. Now, Chris, I know it's probably uncomfortable for you, but I'm going to ask you, how the heck did you get here?
So, this is my twenty-fourth school year with GAPS and my seventh school year as the Board Secretary/Executive Assistant. I was actually moved into this position at a time when many people were leaving. And so, that's how I got into my position seven years ago. And my kids grew up here for the most part. My kids went to school all the way through K-12. I previously worked in Bruce's department as the Assistant to the Assistant Superintendent. And Tanya Everest was the one that moved me into my position now. So, um, and I think why I continue, obviously, is I, I do like the work and I enjoy policy, which some people don't. But I do, so, um, yeah, that's, that's about me.
Thanks, Chris. Now, I know I have the cabinet in the room and I'm, I'm glad that you're here. I'm not going to be able to include you in the conversation because we have limited time. Why do you think I ask these questions? Why did I spend the last ten minutes allowing us to go on this bunny trail?
Give you a little background on us and where we come from.
Sure. What else? Yes. I mean, I could have found this information. I could have cyber stalked it and got all this information anyway. It's not about that. Most board school boards will walk into the room, they'll gavel in, and they'll do their work, take, make a bunch of votes, then they gavel out and they go home. They don't have, they don't connect with each other. It's really about, you know, trying to surface your why. Why are you here? Why are you doing this work? Why did you do this to yourself? This is hard work. You know, and it's not if, it's when the storms will come. This, this district has seen some storms recently. You know what hard board work looks like. Um, and it's your why, knowing each other, uh, you know, not necessarily agreeing, but seeing each other as humans that you are is what allows you to do the hard work, to grapple with the tough questions. It's also a diagnostic tool for me. I'm listening to what you say, you know, what you're focusing on in your comments. So, that helps me shape my, my presentation. So, thank you for indulging me. Um, I'm going to skip through some of these slides because.
Areas of growth, where you need to grow.
Okay.
This is, it's another way, the deficit.
Way to think about, about that. Any other questions? Ready, set, go.
I, I'm just breaking it down because that's how I do it.
I agree.
What a feeling here.
Education, the district board has a longer term perspective.
And we represent quite a range.
Have to consider ourselves, because doing the same thing will, it's almost like many other, so somehow we need to be able to convince through policy.
It's really, yeah.
You might be able to take one of those mics and get a little cord and do a little walk around. Try it. Or there's, there's.
Are they wired or not?
No, but you could, you'll have a leash. Yeah, don't.
Oh, yes. Sorry. I guess everything else is part of that, but the willingness to, yeah, to listen. Willingness to listen.
Yeah.
With an attitude. Well, how can we help versus an attitude?
She passed the buck.
Satisfied, you know, what you're talking about. Yeah.
You want to hear from the people who have been here the least? I see why.
Okay.
I, I understand it's a young board. I get it. It's okay. We're doing, we're doing the best, we're doing our best.
Young from one standpoint.
We're young. All right, we're young. It's okay.
Yeah.
It's okay. What'd you come up with?
Let's talk about strengths. Go around for growth, for areas of growth.
Okay, well, we came up with commitment to the community and to the kids.
Love it. Commitment to community and kids.
And a willingness to listen. Is that what I wrote?
Yeah.
Good. Look, that's what we said.
Willingness to listen. Love it.
To one another. Yeah, to one another. Yeah, I just wrote down smalls.
Yeah, I'm just going to put willing to listen.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. And then for growth, we have, yeah, we didn't.
We have another strength. Of, it, of the, the, I think the board's pretty, we have lots of different people.
Oh, that's right.
It's a board with different experiences to bring to the table. Yes.
Okay.
Diverse.
Or diverse views.
And then we have two.
We'll come back for areas.
Oh, great.
Sorry, did you have a truck problem?
Yeah, I mean, ours was similar, I think. You know, I don't know if diverse is the right word, but there's certainly a variety of experiences and backgrounds.
I can put variety.
That's what we meant.
Yeah, I could, that's what I, um, and then the other thing we really thought is it's a clearly be, a really student-focused board. Let's keep, it's coming up and.
Student-focused, yeah. Love it.
Almost like that's what we should be focused on.
Right, exactly.
What else?
That was kind of it for us on strengths.
Um, we had mentioned, uh, similar with the variety, but just, uh, in terms of like experience of education and also business and how that is a good mix for a board. Um, and then, so technically variety, but maybe a little bit different of a mindset. And then also the, uh, long-term functionality of the district as a goal. Like the, instead of the day-to-day, but ma- mainly making sure that we're looking at it broadly for longevity, like to make sure it's sustainable for the future. Everything continues on.
Can you boil that down into like three words?
Long-term focused. Long-term sustainability.
Long-term sustainability.
Because it's not just.
Sour Patch Kids, good choice.
Dinner. I didn't know we were having dinner, so I brought mine.
It's balanced. Is that four food groups?
Got all the colors.
Okay.
Rainbow.
Uh, most all of them have already been mentioned, but I do want to say that I think one of the strengths is that the board, the board was willing to come together and do a collaborative workshop. I think that's a strength, like a willingness to connect and.
Willingness to learn.
Yeah.
Willingness to learn.
Yep.
At least since I've been under, they did a while back.
It must be fun. None of us got this figured out yet. We're all working hard on it. Is there anything on here I should, I should asterisk? Do you guys?
What does asterisks mean? Everything in red.
That's already, that's already been said. You want to like second that?
Oh. Oh.
I know that's probably hard to read. My, my handwriting, no.
Oh, we came up with, uh, a variety of views.
Variety of views.
That was something that we had mentioned.
Great.
I asked because I didn't know if asterisks meant second or, uh, if there was a caveat.
So, you know that's already stated.
Uh, we also, we also mentioned specifically that it was both educate, I mean, understanding of education and, and business.
Yeah. Okay. Put the red pen away. Started there, so I'll start here. Areas of growth.
Did you get that group over there?
Oh, oh, did you? I'm sorry.
You're fine. You're all good.
We, we had, um, committed to kids.
Yeah, the top one.
We talked to most. Yeah, we talked mostly about that. Okay, and, uh. Yeah, I think that captures what we have.
Awesome. Okay. So. Areas of growth, or areas where the board needs to grow. I'm starting over here, Bruce.
I, I was so, I was so enamored with the strengths that I forgot where we needed to grow. Um, no, it just, um.
And that's okay.
We said learn to, to be.
Yeah, to learn, learn how to work together.
There's two new members.
Yeah.
So, the dynamic has shifted. And so, learning with the new members to.
Yeah, learn how to work as a board.
Learn, cause it does shift everything.
Is that really what, learn as a new board?
Yes, like how to interact with each other and, yeah.
Great.
So we said, um, learning to listen to represent the whole district. I think that, you know, the comment was that at times, the whole community did not see, right? And so some of that has been changed a little bit by the election, right? And so just learning to listen and to communicate.
So I heard represent whole district and listen and communicate.
Yeah.
So those are two different things.
Yeah.
Okay.
We were kind of working on trying to come up with two of each. Works.
Just figure that out, get it all dialed in, you let me know what you're interested in. Every district is your way.
So we also said communication, but more of a, a bend to communicate with the outside world, the public, on how we're doing and what we're doing. Uh, something that Chris championed, so I hope I didn't steal your thunder, but it's, we're trying to get better at.
It's available, Thunder.
We're, we're trying to get better at telling the community what we're doing and why we're doing it. So that level of communication.
So communicate in progress.
Okay. And the other one was achieving better student outcomes.
Oh.
Right, I do have the notes. Um, so we also said communication, um, with the public, with, you know, the district, letting them know what is going on.
Good.
But we also said connection with the community, um, just kind of. Not just communicating, but having that connection with them and that, listening to their feedback and, you know, growing to meet their needs.
That would foster trust.
Yes.
All right.
And you have communicate, just a second.
Communicate.
Communicate.
Connect, communicate with the community. Yeah, communicate.
I would say progress, intention, um, pro- process. Um, it, it would be really nice if people in town knew what was going on. And that's, I understand that we need like miracles for that, but why not start there, you know?
Okay.
It's the hardest thing in any organization, isn't it, the communication?
It is. Cause we're focused on program. All our energy goes into program. Yeah, absolutely.
So ours followed the same line, but we took a little different spin on it. We were talking about systems of consistent communication with the community.
Ooh. I'm gonna say communication systems.
Yeah.
Love it. And is that just communication, or is that engagement systems? Because communication is kind of like, we're communicating out, engagement is a reciprocal relationship.
I think engagement too.
Did we talk about that?
A little bit.
Yeah.
While we're reaching.
Yeah. Thank you, we did.
Yeah.
Wow, that's really inspiring. You guys are gonna have a great four years. If you focus your attention on this, it's gonna be exciting. Okay, we're gonna set that aside for a little bit. Thank you for indulging me.
What's the next slide? We make these slide decks and now we forget what's in them.
Oh, yeah, what are we gonna talk about? Yes, we're gonna talk about also responsibilities and high-performing boards. That's the, the one take-home you need to, this is, I, when I editorialize, I will tell you when I'm editorializing. Otherwise, everything I'm sharing with you is evidence-based. It's based on education science, okay? Talk more about that. Give a little brief overview of balanced governance standards, um, and then we're gonna do some scenarios and then, uh, wrap things up. Yeah, we gotta go fast, here we go. Um, no. So why does the board matter? I don't care, this is what I'm interested in.
What does it say?
Wait, I gotta stay by the microphone. Do you believe this? Can, can every child show growth?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Can every child succeed? Do we believe that?
To me, it would define.
Oh, wait, I got dissent, Brad.
I'm gonna say, it depends upon your definition of succeed. You'd have to be very pointed in that, but.
Hmm?
Cause it, success is a very broad term.
Who define, who defines success?
I was saying it's very subjective as well.
No, seriously, for this board, this is not a rhetorical question. Who defines success for the school district?
Probably the state.
Partly. Who else?
Community.
Vis a vis whom?
Parents, children.
You.
Party members and everybody, everybody.
You define what success is for this district. You are community, you were elected by the community to represent them. Let's back up, because we missed something. The board is the interface between, between the community and the public institution of education in your community. Why do you matter? I, I'm sorry, I skipped over this question, because it is consequential. Why does the board matter? I mean, obviously, I've given you the diagram, so there's the accountability piece. But what else? Why does a school board matter? Because goodness knows, if we could do it without school boards, we would. It would be much easier to do it with, with just a superintendent, it'd be a lot more efficient. Why do we need school boards? Why do you matter?
You know, two different questions. One, you, you need us because it's state mandated by law.
That's true.
I mean, I think the democratic process would tell you that the community feedback on it, based on the success of the district is electing officials and continuing to elect them based on their dissatisfaction or satisfaction with how schools are running around.
Why?
What do you mean, why, why?
Why do, why do we have groups governing public entities?
No, because it's, it's publicly funded, it's a public service for the people.
I get it.
Well, if you're working with students, they're all different. And so success is going to look like different things to different people. People will succeed at one thing and not necessarily at another. Some people succeed at everything, that's pretty nice, but it's not, you can't expect that exactly.
Pretty rare.
Uh, and so you need more than one head making decisions about so many different people. There's gotta be a range of, um, experience and thought.
Oversight.
Yeah, what Chris just said is what I was driving at. I mean, superintendents are an amazing group of people, they're highly talented professionals, but there's still only one person. The reason that we use groups to govern public entities, or even nonprofits, or even our private entities, is because we get better decisions. Groups do a better job chewing through hard, complex questions and get, and are able to new, you know, navigate that nuance to get a good decision.
If they do that.
If they do the work, which is the next piece of this, because we're not done with why does the school board matter? Why else does the, the school board matter? And you guys have experienced this. What's the tone of your organization? Who sets the tone for your organization?
I would say the superintendent.
Right? And the board.
And the board.
Yeah.
Cause who sets the tone for the superintendent?
Yep.
So you do have a very consequential position. Your superintendent, your community, your organization relies on you to grapple with the hardest questions, only the hardest questions ever come to the school board. Okay? And you set the tone for what it looks like in your organization. You create the culture, it starts here in this room. Okay? So, stepping forward to these con-, these questions, we already talked about, can every child show growth? Can every child succeed? Now, understanding that who defines what success is. Now, yes, there are state standards, there's graduation requirements by the, by the, the state, you also have your own graduation requirements. But what about the GED, is that success?
Sure.
Yeah, definitely can be for people.
Yeah, but if I go to another school district, maybe it's not. Now, generally, most people are like, yeah, GED, we'll take it, we'll take anything, you know, that looks like a secondary credential and a plan for post-secondary life. How about this one? We can predict student outcomes by social factors. Is that what we want? Is that what we're aiming at? Does that question make sense?
Only if you wanna keep kids in the same box they arrived in.
Yeah, and I'm not just talking about race, there's socioeconomic status, there's also where they're, their zip code. I've got plenty of, you know, I've gone to school districts where, you know, the school board will make excuses for their district. Okay? Here's the hard one. What percent of students not graduating is acceptable for your board? That's not a rhetorical question.
I would love to say zero. Feasibly possible in the days we're in is not, that's probably not the case, but that would, I would love for that to be the goal.
Okay? Other thoughts?
Or graduate or a GED.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
And when I say graduate, I'm saying graduating, because we know that, I use the word, word success, and we know that there's different ways to interpret that. Some kids are going to college, goodness, goodness gracious, I'm from Corvallis, we send a lot of them, you know, but that's not every kid over there. Some kid's gonna be a diesel mechanic, some kid is gonna be framing houses, some kid's gonna be working in a diner, that's okay, that's fine. So there's lots of different success, so when I say graduating, interpret that broadly.
Yeah, if you put it in that bubble, then, then, uh, a hundred percent of kids need to successfully exit our program, uh, with success or whatever that means to them and their family.
Yeah.
That's GED, a diploma, finishing our community transition program, whatever.
And let's be frank, I mean, when I graduated from high school in nineteen eighty-seven, I graduated from Reesport High School out on the coast, actually, I lived in Winchester, anybody know where Winchester Bay is?
Yeah.
Sure.
Last week.
So, yeah, uh, my highest, my highest hope in school was to be a choker setter, anybody know what a choker setter is?
Yeah.
So that's what I was getting, because in nineteen eighty-six, you could, you could raise a family on that wage, and I was like, yeah, I'll do that. Um, we had a seventy percent graduation rate, and everybody was happy, because there was an economy where us kids could go into, you go work in the woods, you could pull green chain, you go work on a boat, go work in a diner. Today, if a kid doesn't graduate, doesn't get a secondary credential of some sort, whether that's a, a diploma, or a GED, or something like that, they will struggle to find success in the twenty-first century economy, full stop. The expectations have fundamentally changed from when our parents were school board members to now. So if school boarding seems hard, if doing school seems hard to all y'all, that's cause it is. The game has changed. So the reason why I asked this question, I'm, I'll let you off the hook, because it is consequential. I think I even have a slide that goes with it. So this is a, this is really important. School board, school boards that have the single belief that all students can and will learn and be successful fundamentally changes the way you make choices. When you say that ninety-eight percent is good enough, how, how many kids do you have? Okay, how many graduating here?
Five twenty-five, five thirty, twenty-two schools.
Oh my God, I gave myself some hard, hard math there. What's two percent of, of five hundred?
Do you wanna know how many kids, like, at the high school level total?
Yeah, count, like, a count of kids.
High school?
Yeah.
Back number.
No, I don't wanna ballpark his kid.
Uh.
Is that forty-two?
No, high school, total number of high school students are twenty, twenty-six hundred? Okay, so you graduate five fifty. Twenty-seven hundred? Five fifty times point zero-two is eleven kids, two percent.
So then you have to ask yourself, which eleven kids? Which kids are you gonna let go? If fundamentally, you start making choices about who's gonna succeed and who's not, it fundamentally changes the way you make resource allocations and how you approach your governance. So this is consequential and important, having that belief that, that Sean articulated, he's like, man, I know this is hard, are we gonna achieve it next year? No, we're not resourced for it, we're not trained for it to do all the things that we need to for our kids right now, but we're gonna aim there, and that's the goal. It's really important. Oh wow, this changed. So, uh, this is the leadership team, I am, I talked about this earlier, there's three components of it. The board, you provide authority, I think, Ryan, you said, the authority of the board resign, comes from the legislature, you're absolutely right. You provide direction and oversight for the district. Superintendent, he provides operational leadership, more importantly, provides instructional leadership and expertise in running the district. He is your CEO, he turns all your direction into action. A school board without a superintendent is a group of frustrated people, because they can't get anything done. A little earlier this year, I was working with a school board that had lost their superintendent, they had to fire this person suddenly, and the school board, one school member, they were in a meeting, and they, they, one said, oh, we need to communicate to such and that, we need to tell the communication director to send out this message, and the chair had to remind them, under policy BBAA, we can't direct them to action. You don't have the authority to do that, that's why we have a superintendent, crucially important. The other is the, is the board secretary or clerk. They provide coordinate, coordination for the governance process, they ensure your compliance, because we are lay members of the public stepping into a governance role, none of you knew how to be school board members until you sat down in the seat and started doing the work, it's the reason why I have a job. Um, they also provide continuity, often the administrative, the professional is the person that's been there the longest. Superintendents come and go, and so do school boards, but it's the board secretary who knows where the bodies are hit, and may have put a couple of them there too. So, yeah, it's important, that continuity piece. So at the intersections here, you know, with the, between the board and the superintendent, provides overall district leadership, that is your job, is leading this district and finding a way for success for each and every kiddo. Governing bo-, governing, uh, body operations, that's board and secretary. Look, school boards float on an ocean of paper, okay? Now, it's electronic paper these days, but it's still a lot of documents. And then executive functions here, because school board, when you're not here, you have a chief executive that has a lot of decisions to make, that's their primary job, is making choices, often hard choices, um, and he needs to know where he is and what he's doing, and he works with the, there's executive assistant to get that work done. Any questions about this? Oh yeah, and the, at the intersection of all, of three legs here, is leadership efficacy. So it takes all three parties, so when I talk, when I step into a boardroom, I'm not just talking to the board, I'm talking to the whole leadership team, because I need all three of these cylinders hitting hard for it to have good district leadership and good governance happening. Okay? This is a regression model, um, this was done by Tom Alsbury, um, and so they, we know that how board, individual board members show up impacts board work, impacts board culture, that you know intuitively impacts organizational culture, and finds its way into classrooms, impacts kids. This is a closed area of research at this point. Now, when I started, we were at the point, well, I'll put the timeline up and tell the story, but I mean, this is a pretty much sealed-up, um, education research, we know that how boards show up and do their work impacts kids, and there's a horrible saying, it's an old one, if the school board screws up that night, it's in classrooms the next day, but we know equally that the. But we know equally that the opposite is true, that if you get it right that night, it's in classrooms the next day. So let's take a look at some of that. So here's that timeline I was talking about. We gotta redo this slide, um, and get new articles on it, but, um. For those of us who are long in the tooth and have been doing this for a while, you might recognize, um. Lighthouse inquiries. Mary Dala Gardell was a PhD candidate at Iowa State. And Tom Alsberry over there was hi- was her advisor, and they had a research question. If we provide training to school boards, will they change their behavior and practice and does that impact kids? They developed a training program, taught some boards, tracked student outcomes. Sure enough, they found out in Iowa that that happened. They replicated it in Montana and Texas, found the same outcome. And eventually, about the same time I was getting, getting into school board work. This was like twenty thirteen, twenty thirteen, when I was first elected to the Corvallis Board. It was coming to, um, Oregon, and they found the same outcome. And since then, there has been a vibrant air and body of research examining how you influence your kids. And so we know with a fairly high level of detail, the things that you should be doing to influence your kids in a positive way. Okay, so let's look, take a look at that. Ooh, yeah, that's negative. I wanna look at positive impacts. No! On a different theme. It's okay. I'm not gonna go over the slide. I could probably do it from memory, but I'm not. Uh, we'll ta- we'll go through, uh, the twelve standards for balanced governance, which really illuminate the, this is better than this slide anyway. But we will talk about these because these are all the bad things that we can do. And you guys know this stuff. Um, if our meetings are not well organized, if we're not orderly, if we're, uh, meandering around in our conversation. Um, if some individuals are taking up too much airtime, that was my problem. You know, we're not gonna have a productive meeting. Next one, less time spent on student achievement. They literally have grad students measure with stopwatches, measuring how much time you talk about your kids. Boards that talk about the needs of their students tend to have better student outcomes. Common sensical. And then you got the usual stuff. Members seek to advance their own agendas, less effective working relationships. Less reliance on the administrator for advice and input. We're gonna talk about the importance of that here in just a little bit. Over on Devarix and O'Brien, twenty sixteen, um, only vaguely aware of school improvement initiatives. You know, we'll talk about this idea of in- of informed oversight. Brad, I think you talked about oversight. So there's this idea of informed oversight in the research that we want the board to be sitting there. So if you're not an informed oversight, you're gonna have problems. Making excuses, external pressures, communication, teachers, staff, families, lots of different excuses. I mean, goodness gracious, man. The teachers union, we gotta rein in the teachers union. Boy. You know, you saw PPS, they almost went on strike. It's unbelievable. You know, we gotta rein them in, yeah. If we could just rein in the teachers union, then we'd have student success, sure. Or parents. You know, parents, they don't show up to curriculum night. We bought pizza. What do we need to do? Sell, give them margaritas to show up to, you know, curriculum night? Parents just don't care. They don't care about their kids. You know, I get, uh, excuses from school boards. Well, you know, we're just that little rural district. We can't, we just, we don't have the programs that those big schools can offer. What would you expect? Or it's those kids. You get the idea. We don't get to make excuses on the school board. If you don't believe that every kid can succeed, then you can't expect anybody else to believe it. The buck stops with you. No one else is gonna come and fix it for you. You have to do it. That's the job you got elected to do. I'm sorry. It's a hard one. Micromanaging, not good. Um, yeah, you need to trust your, your education professional. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, staff don't know the board. And in fact, you will know that you are doing well and earning the trust of your staff. When they want to report to you, when they wanna come into the boardroom and share their work with you. You don't want them to be afraid of you. When teachers are coming into the boardroom and telling you how they tried something new and got it wrong. And learned something new for next time, then you'll know that you're doing well as a board. And then anecdotes and personal experiences. We want to be representing all kids. And so we use data and broad swaths of information to do our work. Okay? Now, I grew up on the coast, so I tend to use nautical themes or metaphors, but I want you to think. Of your school district as a cruise ship. Now, you have a captain of your cruise ship. You know, it's Captain Gardner, bonus point. If when I come back, you have, he has a captain's hat, that'd be great. Be really cool. He's in charge of everything. So right now, he's getting the ship, you know, making sure engineering works. Making sure that all the maintenance is done, setting up contracts for food, food service, staffing out the ship. Because he's gotta take this ship out of harbor and navigate it and start the school year. Okay? School board, you commission the journey. You say, Captain Gardner, take us to the island of student success paradise where every kid graduates or gets a secondary credential. And has a plan for post-secondary life. You set the destination of where this district, district is gonna go, and you set the intermediate goals. But at all times, you're gonna trust your maritime professional, because does anybody in the room know how to run a cruise ship? Me either. There's another way to think about it. When was the last time you climbed into the cockpit and told the pilot how to fly the plane? Now, they literally lock the doors these days, so you can't do this. But, so we don't. We always trust our aviation professionals, right, when we take a flight, but that doesn't mean we don't have expectations. You bought a ticket, and so if I buy a plane ticket and I'm going to Hawaii, I wanna land in Honolulu, cuz I'm going on vacation. I sure as heck better land in Honolulu, because I paid a lot of good money for that ticket, right? Same thing with the school board. And now, you know, they have these data dashboards. Have you been on there where it gives, shows you the flight? And it gives you your altitude and time to destination? That's just a data dashboard. We do the same thing with school districts. That's tracking data. And we also evaluate performance, right? Has anybody, as you're stepping off the plane. You know, and the, the pilot's standing there cuz they always look cool. And you say, hey, thanks for the nice landing, thanks for the flight. That's evaluate, you're evaluating them. Or if you had that really hairy landing and there was a thunderstorm and the plane came down sideways. You're like, thank you for getting us on the ground alive. Same thing. We trust our aviation professionals. So it's the, the same sort of relationship that we have with our, with our executive leadership. Questions, comments? Have I pissed anybody off?
Try harder.
It may have been inadvertent, but I like the size of the boat and that we're not a speedboat.
No speedboats here, man.
So the quick turns, the, you know, the slalom course or whatever, that boat can't do it. And we're a big boat.
Yeah. You guys are a big boat. Takes a lot to turn that. Yeah, I could use a tanker. Okay, um, so let's put this into, in the parlance, six thirty, okay? Um, into the parlance of scho- of school districts. Um, so in our governance role, we're adopting policy. Because policy is how we operational, uh, excuse me, operationalize our governance. So the board meets once a month, twice a month. Once a month, once a month. So in their intervening thirty days, your superintendent and district staff need to know what you expect of them. And policy is where they look. It's a message in the bottle to them. Superintendents read policy at like eleven o'clock at night when something terrible has happened, oftentimes. That's not completely true, but. But that's often the time when, when some, they have, they have a real problem and they're like, oh, my goodness. What, you know, what's the expectations on how to do this? You adopt the budget, you know, but your, your, uh, superintendent and district team are gonna roll up those expenditures. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do the ARs and policy. Your, um, your superintendent and district team is going to turn your policy language into operational language. Because as an employee, I may not understand exactly what the policy intends, you know, on a day-to-day basis, so we have administrative rules to do that. Yeah, program adoption versus program implementation. Curriculum adoptions, I love that example. We'll talk about, uh, informed oversight here in just a sec. And I'll use a curriculum adoption, um, example. District makes a recommendation. Community engagement is one of those odd areas because there's, the board has roles and so does the district. In fact, there's, there's statutory requirements on some community engagement on the part of the district with special education and. Integrated guidance and all kinds. There's a bunch of other stuff, and they probably know a lot more about that than I do. Um, so they're doing community engagement on a fairly regular basement basis. The way a board does that looks different. And district can, uh, can't say things that school board can say, particularly when we're in a political environment, like when we're going out for. Operating like, do you guys have an operating levy? Okay. Or if we go out for a bond, there's definitely things that you can say in public that district staff can't. So, and this last one is this idea of informed oversight and monitoring. And management is providing data and information. I've got a slide for it. I wanna go back. Ah, so this is back to, um, more what does a board do in nuts and bolts sort of terms? Um, I put an arrow there that said improved student outcomes because that's where this cat is pushing. That is our one, one job. It's what makes school boarding more fun than, uh, being on a county commission or in, on a city government. Because counties and cities have a lot of different things that they have to do. We've got one mission. We've got one thing to do, and that's to launch kids into their lives. So we can be really focused in the way at work that we do. And it's always the common ground that you can come back to. Even when you're fighting like cats and dogs on an issue, you can always come back to, we're all here showing up for kids. We all care about kids. You can always have respect for your colleagues on that, and assume positive intent. Improved student outcomes. So how do we do this? Uh, we have some functional things. Now, the, the levers here are an analog for how much impact it has on kids. So what the board does that has impacts on kids. Oh, man, I'm sorry. Hire and evaluate the superintendent. Number one, most important thing that you do. Because he's here every day, we're only, we're only showing up once a month. So who you hire to do that work is crucially important. And I include and evaluate there because that's the single most powerful tool that you have. To foster the relationship with your chief executive. So under statute, I can't believe that they let us do it. Under statute, you can meet in private with your superintendent, have really nerdy. Conversations about education and district performance. It's amazing. And I don't know why boards don't use it more often. Yeah, at OSBA, we recommend that you have quarterly check-ins in private with your, with your superintendent. And understand that you are in an employer, employee relationship. It is you, the responsibility, you, you five individuals to ensure that he can be the best possible professional he can be for your kids. So your job is to support and grow him. Okay? Ooh, this is tough. Develop and adopt policy. I'm sorry that this is hard to read. So this is how we operationalize our governance. This is the instruction that you're giving to your, to your, uh, to your superintendent and your staff. So we spend this preponderance of our time working on policy, cuz that's how we do our work. This is track district progress. Well, I have some slides on why this is important, but this is crucially important because it creates the, um, the opportunity for conversations. That ends up finding its way into classrooms that impacts kids. This is, I believe it is. Approve the budget. Because, and it's a small lever. Because here in Oregon, most of our control of revenue has gone to the, to the legislature. Prior to the, the, uh, reforms of the nineties, uh, we had more control over revenue. You know, but now today, they're just really, there's a fixed amount of pie. It's kind of set for us. And so it's really about. Our budget process is really about ensuring that the budget aligns with district priorities. That you have built collaboratively with your team. It's more of a check-in. And the last one, there's a tiny little one down there. This is ministerial, you know, processes or ministerial actions of the board. This is the toilet paper contract. Or check in and looking at the check register or any of the approving contracts. You have a su- really, really effective superintendent and a great district team to do this technical work. Don't get mired in ministerial stuff. There are some things that you're required to examine and you should stay in oversight, but don't get mired in it. Very little impact on kids. Focus on the, on these other things. Uh, here we go. Informed oversight. So this is a, you know, we have, you know, this disengaged rubber stamp board. You know, whatever the superintendent comes and recommends, you know, we're not gonna ask questions. We're like, yep, that's great. We have quick meetings. We have hour-long meetings, hour-and-a-half meetings. There are boards that have really quick meetings. Meet once a month, hour-and-a-half, and they're done. We also have the overreaching micromanaging board. I'm gonna go into schools unannounced and I'm gonna be, you know, checking in on classrooms to see how things are going, checking the tone. How are the teachers doing? I wanna know. It's my job. I was elected to do that, so that's micromanaging. It's not my job. I'm a, I'm, I'm an elected lay board member. I'm not an education professional. We wanna be in this sweet spot, this state of informed oversight. So it. Where we're not disengaged, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna engage, we're gonna ask hard questions. That's our job. That's our biggest job is to add hard questions. Also, understand that. Uh, K- Twelve education has been professionalizing since the nineteen sixty. And it's largely evidence-based here in the United States at this point. So these guys are all trained professionals, they're education professionals. They're thinking way up here. They have PhDs and master's degrees. But me, I need you to bring that down to my level. And I need you to bring it down to the level for mom and dad so that they can understand. And this is one of the key roles of the board. Is we're not, not just asking questions to have our thumb on the district, but to get them to. Interpret their work in a way that mom and dad can understand. And that's crucially important.
Does I have a question?
Yeah.
So, um, we have done school walkthroughs with board members.
Yeah.
And we wanna continue that. I, I just wanna like not have a.
School visits.
Questions about that, because we really want, uh, the board to come with us to see like what we're looking for. Give kudos where it's being done.
Yeah.
Understand what administrators being asked to do to support, right? So, uh, could you, like, that would not fall into micromanaging.
No. And the reason, reason for that is because it's mediated through you, um, and through district staff. So I'm gonna get myself, so my legal team, that we've had lots of problems with school board members visiting schools in the last year or so. And so they're really pushing to recommend not having school board visits. As a former school board member, well, let me back up. I have a dear friend who does environmental consulting. And he has the saying, there is no substitute for walking the land on which you're going to make a decision. And as a former school board member, that is crucially true. There is no substitute for walking in a school where, you know, and being guided with a, with a building administrator. And watching education happen. You know, the, it's a very rich experience and it's really important. The key there is that I'm not gonna, if I wanna go visit a school, I'm gonna check in with my superintendent. And then he's gonna set up that meeting so I can visit, visit there. Because when we show up at, in, in a school, that can be really, really disruptive. Because school members, school board members do show up in buildings in an available of capacity, and that's wrong. Because, let's be frank, there's no expectation that anybody on a school board has any skill in pedagogy. Or school administration or school governance. Okay? So we don't get to evaluate what's happening in buildings. We can ask questions, though. Thanks for that. That's important. So this informed oversight space is crucially important. A really good example is a curriculum adoption. So a curriculum adoption, whatever it is, and particularly for a district your size, is really expensive. About how much is, so like, how much, two million?
Two and a half, yeah.
Oh, my God, that's, anyway. So that's, that's real money. Two million bucks is real money. So that's something that you're going to want to know about, right? So that process should look like, you know, that these things are scheduled. Hopefully we're on schedule, but we're not always. And if we're not, then we can ask questions about that. Why not? And how are we going to get back on schedule? It's reasonable to ask those things. But eventually superintendent is going to direct, say, his English language arts team to say, we're going to, we need to go out. We're going to do an adoption. And so they will come to the board and say, hey, we're going to do an adoption. You know, here are the approved curricula. We're going to go out. We're going to look at them. We're going to try them out. We'll be back in a couple of months. Three months, whatever, however many each time. And they're going to go try those out. And then they're going to come back with a recommendation. They're going to say, we looked at the, we, there were four. We looked at these three because these are the ones that are really good. This one was not going to work at all. And then we really like option B and here's why. And then they're going to tell you in gritty detail why this is awesome. They're going to let you look at the, at the curriculum materials. They're going to take you through that because again, we have no skill in pedagogy. I mean, I sat on the court of Osborne for 10 years. I have no, I didn't go to school for education. I don't know what I'm. When I look at curriculum, I don't know what I'm looking for. So I need an educator to guide me through that. So we go through that, check, we are convinced, we're happy. We, and this is one of those times where we bring that language down to mom and dad's level. So that we all can understand this curriculum that we're going to, and why it's going to be effective. Go ahead and make the purchase, get the materials. And then we check in. Superintendent, you know, what is, what does professional development look like this next year? Or what are we doing over the summer on professional development on our English language arts curriculum adoption? So we get a report on that. And then we start getting reports in that first year. Now, understand that with, with an ELA adoption, you may see a decline in scores. Board, we need to be prepared for that. And so we're having our conversation. You may, it may take two or three years for that curriculum to really fully take hold. So this can take a long time. And that's why informed oversight is the key thing. Understand that at no point in this process did a school board member show up in a classroom to evaluate the delivery of this. But you might have asked, superintendent, how do we know that our curriculum, our new curriculum is being taught with fidelity? And he's going to have an answer for that. Or he's, someone on his team is going to have an answer for something like that. So it's the state of informed oversight. Crucial information flowing into the boardroom so that you're informed and ready to make decisions. Any questions on that? It's a really important idea. I'm going to stop talking here. Okay. This is important. I just got to get through these standards and then we can do fun stuff. I'm sorry. I've been talking at you for a while. Balanced governance. So at OSBA, we use balanced governance as a theoretical framework for understanding how school boards impact kids. These are all the good things that you can do to impact kids. This was on that other slide that didn't display correctly. So standard one. So these are used for board self-assessment. But everything that we teach, so most of what I'm talking about is in standard 11. You'll see it when we get to it. Almost everything I've talked about is in standard 11. It's all about board operation and board relationship with superintendent. That's about all I've been talking about. Everything that we teach is aligned to these standards. Okay? So first one, vision directed planning. This is all about creating an urgency, a vision for what's possible for your kids. Can we, can we find a pathway for each and every, every kid in our district? And believing that we can do that and building a vision of high expectations for our kids and building a sense of urgency around that. Next one is community engagement. Understanding that it's on you to build that public will to succeed. You are the liaison. You are the interface between the public institution of education and the community. You are bringing, and you're bringing, bringing community into your decision-making processes and systematizing that. Dave brought that up. Effective leadership. This is about, yeah, this is about how you show up, but it's also ensuring, a lot of this is about ensuring that decision-making is at the lowest possible level, lowest operational level. So delegating, pushing authority downward into the organization so the organization can be more responsive. Accountability. This is one of the big ones. So there are, we have identified core standards. Tom Alsberry, who is the author of this, has not identified core standards, but internally for us, we have. Standard one, vision directed planning is a core standard. You gotta have it. Okay? Number four is a core standard. It's one of the things we've got, we got to be able to do. So we have to have high expectations for learning and we have to have measurable goals that can be monitored. So you should have district priorities with measurable goals and then tracking metrics to go with it. So accountability is crucially important. Going right with it is standard five, using data for continuous improvement. Look, before No Child Left Behind, it was okay for school boards not look at disaggregated student data. Today, you, you, an expectation that you're going to be data savvy. You should be consuming a regular regimen of student data. Okay? Looking at district team too. Next one is cultural responsiveness. This is a new standard for us. And it's, and it's salient because like we talked about earlier, the game has changed. Seventy percent isn't good enough anymore. We're aiming at a hundred percent. So if we're going to get every kid to succeed, then we got to meet them where they're at. And that's what cultural responsiveness is. And so we have to hold ourselves accountable to that. What does culturally responsive governance look like? And that might feel a little uncomfortable because we've never done this before. We're still trying to figure that out. And that's okay. We just got to show up dressed out, trying to do it. Because getting each and every kid over the line is the goal, right? Culture and climate is about, you know, building, building, you know, we talked about organizational culture. You set the tone. So it's building that culture and suffusing it and setting an expectation of what you want the organization to be like. Learning organization. Wow, I love this one. This is a new one as well. What do you know? Education is a learning organization and we should govern it that way. Also, we're doing something that's unprecedented. We've always, you know, had some rate of failure in our education system. But we're trying to do something different now. And we don't know how to do that. And your district team, they're rebuilding the plane as we're, as they're flying it. And you're doing that with them. You probably didn't know that when you ran for office, but that's what you're doing. You're rebuilding education. So we have a lot of learning to do and we have to do that together and you have to lead that way. So you need to start building that into your governance. Systems thinking. This is all about seeing, looking inward, seeing your school district as an integrated system. So if we make one change in this department, that can have cascading impacts elsewhere. You know, so if we say we lose like, you know, IDA funding that impacts, you know, special education. Well, we are going to have to backfill special, special education because we still have legal requirement, but that's going to impact other instruction. Cascading effects. So that's just thinking internally. Externally, seeing yourself as a public institution in your community along with your other public entities like city and county and other special districts. And then also seeing yourself in a federal, a state system of education and a federal system of education. So systems thinking and knowing that things that are happening in Washington can impact you. And in Salem. Innovation and creativity. Back to the idea of building the plane while we're flying it. We're going to have to be creative. It's not easy. Last few here are the, are when we think about board work, these are the one things that we usually think about. Standard 11 is what we've been talking about, board member conduct, ethics, relationship with superintendent, blah, blah, blah. It's the, it's the bread and butter of board work. The other one is budget and financial accountability. So those are also core standards. We've got to know how to work together as a board. We need to know how as a, as a governing board to work with our chief executive and our administrative professional. That's really what 11 is all about. The other one is making sure that we spend money in alignment with our priorities. Twelve standards. Any questions? I've like bored you into like glazed eyes. So let's take this out for a spin. Oh, and we're not going to talk about data, data, data. Oh, I do want to talk about this. Can the board impact superintendent's leadership? So standard five in there was using data for continuous improvement, right? So there's account standard for accountability. The other way we operationalize that is with data, right? Student data. So this is consequential. This is research from my colleague, Kristen Miles. She looked at board self-assessments and boards that rated themselves high in these area, community engagement, cultural responsiveness and using data for accountability tend to have a positive impact on superintendent's transformational leadership. And specifically inspirational motivation was in transformational leadership. And so we don't know, we don't know exactly why that is. But we theorize or speculate that when we're focusing in these three areas, when we're using data for accountability, if we're looking at our kids and looking at our student data, slicing it by our different student groups, being culturally responsive, and we're doing that in the boardroom and engaging community in that, that's really exciting. We're having tough conversations about student outcomes and we're asking why. Why are these disparities here? And then how are we going to fix that? And that's really motivating. That's our guess. So this slide is not, oh, man, I really wish your theme got been superimposed onto my slide. So it's hard to read this. Yeah, we can talk about community engagement, advisory committees, you know, this is what it looks like. So doing advisory committees, talking, involving families, administrative and teachers and strategic decision-making. It looks much better over here. You can actually read that. Yeah, using data for continuous improvement. Don't touch the screen, Vince. Multiple sources of high-quality data. So if we're looking at lots of different data, we're looking at growth metrics for our kids, ensuring gaps and opportunities where we can improve our performance. Great stuff. And the culture, you're celebrating the diversity of our, of our district. You have a diverse district. And diversity looks different where you go in the state. That's okay. Students see themselves in the curriculum and then where you applying inequity lens or. For the work that we're doing. So that's what it looks like on the book. Okay. It is 5:15. Great. Time, we have time for scenarios. I can slow down, relax a little bit. So I battled at you for a while. Now we're going to take it out for a spin. So the rest of the talk is pretty much scenarios. So this is, yeah. So during a recent meeting, a board member rejected the proposed vision statement. We succeed when students thrive. All means all. They indicated it was impossible for each student to achieve at a high level. Many students do not have the support at home necessary for them to be successful, said the board member. This is an impossible goal and should not be approved by the board. I'd love to hear your thoughts and I'm going to tell you a story.
I think this goes back to the definition of success because if we're expecting every student to be a doctor or lawyer, it's not possible. But if we have realistic expectations of they're going to be a contributing member of society after fulfilling our program, whether that's any of the three that Ryan mentioned or any of the other ones that it's something that we can count as a success is not seen as, it sounds like, I mean, yeah, it's impossible for every kid to graduate and be a doctor. It's not going to happen. They don't all have the ability to do that. I don't know if I could be a surgeon or something, but it's just we're at the level of success is determined.
Other thoughts?
I've seen lots of students who did not have support at home achieve.
Right. I think this statement puts limits on what we can see from our students versus giving them an expectation of success being at any level. Success could mean something very small to one person and big to another. But if we put limits on it, we're not going to see the success. So.
Also looking for an excuse to fail before they even start, which seems like a bad precedent.
Other thoughts? Yeah?
And goals are best when they're aspirational and, and lead you to a higher plane, even though the data may suggest that the reality can't be necessarily achieved, at least at this time. But causing people to strive and, and seek a higher level, they can typically find more in themselves than they thought they had.
I love that you, sorry, you guys captured this. So I'm struck by, there are two stories. Let's talk about the impact. What do you think the impact of this? This happened, this would have happened in a public meeting. So what do you think the impact would be?
Gives people permission. There's a permission granted. We're not all kids to succeed.
Sure.
That makes it clear that we're not expecting all kids to succeed. And, and some of me just don't even need to start with because it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not educational.
I think Brad mentioned the aspirational goals, but it also kind of leads to a lowering of standards. Or it's like, oh, we don't have to try to have all of these resources because, oh, that student or these students or they're not going to meet the expectations. So aspirational goals and lower standards kind of both shift in the negative direction in that.
I think also it puts a negative tone in the community. I think certain families see that and say, okay, well, I can't provide the certain supports for my kid at home because I work two jobs or I, you know, I have to work in the evenings when my kids are home, but I'm home during the day when they're at school. And now we're falling into that category. So now this school district is not there for my family and.
So this is a real scenario. This really happened. This came out of a conversation a year ago at our summer board conference. We were talking about all means all. You, you get the idea. You saw the slides. We were teaching board governance essentials and we had those slides. And a school board member shared that their board a week prior had had this conversation and this comment had been made. Like a day or two after that meeting, the board member had an interaction with a kid that had been watching the meeting. And the kid said, I thought they were talking about me. I thought they were talking about me. So there's a few things here. One, it's believing in all kids. It's their goodness limitless potential. And, and we also need to be mindful what we say. And so, you know, when we cultivate culture in our boardroom, this is kind of what we're talking about.
We need to remember that the students aren't just a concept.
Right.
They're real. They're actual people. And yeah, they do listen. They do pay attention. They do allow themselves to aspire or they don't allow themselves to aspire.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Okay. A board member posts a question on Facebook asking for info on the math teacher's behavior. She states that her daughter was upset, is upset because of the way the teacher runs the classroom and wants to know if others are having the same concerns. She makes herself available for questions by text, email and social media. She goes to the superintendent and shows them the concerns, wanting something to change immediately. She also emails other board members for their input. She tells the superintendent, they do not deal with it. She'll bring it up at the next board meeting.
There's about four things wrong there.
Okay, hold on. Before we dogpile this.
Yeah.
Is there anything good going on here?
She has a legitimate concern for her daughter's well-being and, and math.
Sure.
I would say an idea of reach out to the community, but in practice not.
Yeah, an attempt at community engagement. Sure.
Oh, she is gathering information.
And she is making herself available to the community.
And her colleagues.
He takes it to the superintendent before bringing it up at a board meeting.
Yeah, it wasn't brought up at a board meeting. Hallelujah. Yeah. Okay.
Now you want to go down the.
What's problematic? First of all.
First of all, she went at it as a board member instead of a parent. So she, if she would've gone at it as a parent, then she would've had better leg to stand on because she was a concerned parent. Other thing is she involved other board members in taking it to a board, that's a serial meeting by definition. About something that may become before the board for a vote, right? So you violated there. She also forgot that. Board members are not operational. We deal in policy.
Right?
She chose Facebook. This is wildly inappropriate.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Brad, do you think you can separate yourself as a parent and a board member at this point? Like, can you differentiate that? I mean, just in general, like, hey, I'm posting as a parent about a school issue.
I I think you have that right. It's gonna be difficult because you're both. You still have a student. You still have a parental concern, yet I also have my function as a board. So it would be a tightrope for sure. And and people are gonna conflate the two, but you would have to make, okay, this is not me as a board member. I'm a parent, I'm concerned, and maybe talking to other people in that class to see if they've had that problem. But I wouldn't have taken it to the superintendent. I would've gone and talked to the teacher.
I just meant in terms of being on Facebook, right?
Oh, I don't go on Facebook.
Kids or grandkids in the district? Okay, so then we'll go down this rabbit hole because, I mean, you have kids and grandkids in the district. I mean, this is operational. And I, when I was on the Corvallis, I got two daughters and they're in the Corvallis district. Heck, I, when I rotated off the board, people still treated me like a school board member. It's amazing. So you never get to take the hat off. You may, you may say, you know, in parent-teacher conferences, you've probably done this, or you will do this this fall when you go into parent-teacher. A meeting with you as a parent and not as a school board member. You take, you try to take the hat off, but it's still there. It will always be there. And yeah. I mean, it was twenty twenty-four and people were still treating me like a school board member, even though I wasn't a school board member. It's just the the water that we we swim in once you're elected. The key is is to, I mean, and I've, I've had this interaction, I've done this. I mean, we had a problem. Uh, my oldest daughter was having a problem in middle school and had to go talk to the the teacher. But I called my superintendent or I texted my superintendent and said, hey, Ryan, I'm going to the middle school and we got a problem. I'm going in hot. And let him know that that it was going down. He was like, okay. And it was fine, ended up being fine, had a great conversation. It was, you know, we resolved it, but. I was trying to ensuring that I was cultivating trust with my superintendent because I was still a board member. And if I had walked into that classroom and started yelling and screaming and throwing my weight around, that would have been, you know, inappropriate use of. My power, political power.
It's also probably not the way you would have advised another person to handle the problem. If someone had said, gosh, this is happening, what should I do about it? That's probably not what you would've told them.
So I think my next slide, oh, no, it's not the next slide. Yes, so I think Brad, you were the one that brought up public meetings law. That definitely is in here. So we're having communications outside of meetings. Via email, text, and social media. Can you have a public meeting on social media?
Probably if you notified, noticed a.
Notify and it's and it's broadcast.
Legal, but I mean, it's not legal, but if someone say, someone, now what's in? In Corvallis, we have like three threads in Facebook. It's like Corvallis Conversations, Corvallis People, and I think there's a second Corvallis People. It's like overachievers. Anyway, I'm sure over here in Albany, you have the equivalent, what's it called? Albany Happenings, and you know it is. And if there's anything going on, if there's anything going on with the district. There's a dumpster fire on Albany Happenings, okay?
It's usually a dumpster fire on Albany.
I mean, that's, that's what happens. Okay, I get it. So. Say someone posts something on Albany Happenings and, well, Brad, you don't go on there, but Sean, I bet he's gonna, he's like, no way. This is great. I'm two, I'm two out of five, but don't have a Facebook account. But say Sean does and he posts and then Chris does and then, oh, Stephanie gets in there. You now have comments from three board members in a public forum. Or you have a quorum that's arguably a public meeting that has not been noticed. And you may be deliberating towards, towards a decision in a public setting. Don't do that. Yeah.
It's about concrete.
It's about concrete. I don't have all my slides on social media. There's, we do have guidelines for social media. But as a school board member, as a former school board member, I would just recommend staying out of it. Do post links from your district office, so and also follow your your district's social media channels. And repost their stuff. And if there is something going on in social media, the dumpster fire. You can share information, factual information linked, which is in the form of a link to the district office page, you know. They're posting all, they're putting information up that's factual that you can share with the public. That's fine. But don't comment on anything. Goodness, no. Oh, public records. Oh, yeah, all those, all that communication, those emails, all that was creating public records. So then if it goes to court, then it can be subpoenaed and that's phones and computers and all that stuff. Not a good time. So, yeah, keep all your deliberations right here in this nice safe place. This is not what I want. Oh, my goodness, this is uh executive sessions. I'm just gonna skip because I wanna get to the good stuff. Uh, you can meet, I hate this slide.
It's her way to X off that upper right corner on there.
X the X.
I didn't see that. You can meet in an executive session for a lot of different reasons. I think there's one more. I'm not gonna walk through all of these. Understand that you are expected to meet in public unless for very specific reasons. Otherwise, you have an administrative professional to help you parse this. You never have to have any questions about this because you can always reach out to us. I have a wonderful legal team that will let you know if you can meet in executive session or you have district counsel that can do that. So just, yeah. It's an easy thing to get right. It's very.
Say no.
Not.
We got thrown right under the bus first year. Ethics violation.
I'm sorry.
Me too. So now I'm cagey about executive sessions.
You wanna talk about it more?
No.
Okay.
None, not recorded.
Okay, so, yeah, there's, I I mean, there's just get, be, you know, just crystal clear on whether you can go into an executive session. Brad's shaking, scratching his head and going, I don't wanna talk about this. Yeah, it's just really none. Conflicts of interest. Let's talk about this. These, this is not full instruction on conflict of interest, but um. We'll talk about it really quickly. So in this situation, you know, a school district is constructing a new elementary school, developing criteria for. A constru- construction bid process. A board member's son owns a construction company, or maybe a board member owns a construction company. Uh, in town. Is this a conflict of interest? So what would create a potential conflict of interest?
That was commercially licensed.
Yeah, I mean, if. So um I'm trying to remember the, there is a chain. So pretty much anybody who is um. Related to you by blood or by marriage um is a dependent. Um, and new in the law, if they reside with you. They're also included. So if they are gonna material, could potentially materially benefit, then you have a potential conflict of interest. Again, no reason to have any ambiguity about this. If you get a whiff that you may materially benefit from your position. Being on the board. Contact your administrative professional and then have them reach out to Oregon Government Ethics Commission and get an opinion from them. No reason to get in trouble on this. Just clear it with them and they'll, they'll give you an opinion. They will send you an email with an opinion. So they'll give you the instructions. Yeah, when participating official actions could develop a bid criteria. Because their actions could financially impact the the son's construction company. Or in this case, because you own a construction company, you work, you work in constructor, own a construction company.
Yes.
Yes, both of those things. So then, yeah, I mean, if it could be, we tailor this bid so that Sean could, you know, we don't wanna do that. So you may consider recusing yourself whenever you have a potential conflict of interest. You wanna surface it in the room. And and process it as a team. So whenever you're doing anything, you always go together, so.
If it was a sealed bid in this scenario and all the bids were received by Dave, for example, as a sealed bid and they opens it at the appropriate time. Then that would be allow Sean to bid along with everyone else, I would assume.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you're moving, you're getting ahead of me. So we're getting the actual conflict of interest. And that could be, couldn't, well, at this point. It's a potential conflict of interest, but if he can be objective and and represent the whole district and and all of you are confident in that. Then you're okay. Again, go to O G C and get clarity on this. Okay, and then actual conflict of interest. So now you're soliciting the bid. This is where you were going for the construction. There are four qualified bids and this one, Sean is one of them. Uh, school board will be awarding contract to one of the four bidders. At their upcoming meeting, one of the qualified bids submitted by Sean and his construction company. Now we have an actual conflict.
I would just like to clarify that I'm residential and white commercial. I can't do.
He can't do this. I'm sorry, I'm I'm putting you in a tight spot, but I mean, when you have a construction person on the board, it's like, it's, you know, people pay attention. It's really.
Wanted to clarify.
It's a very plausible scenario. Not to say that he's bidding on on any district work. So then, so if he was actually participating, so then if you were actually evaluating on the award of that. The bid, then that's where you have a problem. If you are in an actual conflict of interest situation and O G C says, yeah, that's an actual conflict of interest. I recommend that you, you know, get up, leave the room, don't even part, you don't participate in deliberations. I wouldn't even be in the room. And that's going above and beyond. That's more than what is legally required. And that's because we're not just trying to be compliant, we're trying to cultivate the public's trust. Because in these situations, what's being broken is public trust. We lose trust in buckets, but we earn it in little drops. Okay, so we have to be consistent in doing that. It's pretty rare, but again, don't be intimidated by conflict of interest. We're gonna skip over this one because it's a very similar to the other one, but um the other one, that was the Facebook complaint. That one was very similar, but I do wanna go through, go through complaints and I hope these slides come out okay. So. In that scenario, that the parent couldn't direct the teacher to do anything because they're just a parent at that point. So an individual board member excises the authority and responsibility of their position when the board is in legal session only. You have the authority to direct the superintendent and and the district to action right now. As soon as the gavel drops, once Ryan gavels you out of here. You are John Q. Public from a legal standpoint. And the same is true of our um scenario with a parent. You know, she couldn't direct the teacher to do anything. She could make requests. Um, and similarly, she couldn't direct the the superintendent to do anything because she was just an individual board member. The superintendent works for the whole board, not for individual board members. Yeah.
But but even if we were in session, I don't believe that we could. Tell Superintendent Gardner to take a disciplinary action upon a teacher because of something in our our daughter's classroom that happened. We don't go operational. We can pass policies that would affect maybe the entire district, but we couldn't go into a classroom. Right. I'm just making sure that that point's clear.
No, 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 yeah, please, thank you for clarifying that. No, we wouldn't because it's not a role.
Correct.
Now, if there was a complaint, it was appealed, we'll get there and then that's. But we'll get there. No individual can draw, may direct the superintendent to action without board authorization. Board members will not intervene in the administration of the district or its school, so directly to your point, Brad. Board, um, that scenario definitely had violations of board member's standards of conduct. This is policy B B F. Board's best friend. Um, who enforces policy B B F?
Probably the other board members.
Correct. The board does. In worst-case scenario, it's gonna be a public complaint. But board members, you're the ones that hold each other accountable. Um, public complaints, so yeah, the, what really should have happened potentially is having a public complaint. Um, so, oh, no. So when does the board hear public complaints? That's what's on the, that's what's on the screen. You just.
Still.
Listening sessions?
Do you mean a- actual complaints?
Formal complaint?
Formal complaint.
It sort of depends.
When you're in your acting in your judicial capacity, not in a public hearing when someone is is. But let's pause. Let's just imagine you're in, you're having a here because you guys have been listening sessions, right? And you take public comment.
Sure.
So if someone starts to surface a complaint, what do you do?
Direct them to the policy and the forms that attach it.
Yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, get him in touch with Chris Green because she can notice where all the bodies are buried.
Yeah, a really graceful way is to have the chair just turn to the superintendent and say, superintendent, can we follow up on that? And he'll do just that. And he will. Because whilst, you know, the public thinks we as a school board have magic wands and we can like, you know, make things happen. You know, magically, superintendents actually do have magic wands. Now, they have folks like, you know, these department directors and building principals that can actually get resources on a kid and a family. To make miracles happen, okay? So that's what we do with complaints. But when we, when we're coming back to it, when we're in our judicial part, when do we hear complaints?
Last resort.
Yeah, so a appeal, so if the superintendent has made a decision on a complaint, on appeal, what else?
I would say on appeal or if it's a complaint about the superintendent where they have, they can't make the ruling on themselves.
Right.
That's it. Yeah, policy K L. Uh, this is the appeal piece. If the complainant is dissatisfied with the superintendent's findings. Uh, complainant may appeal. Um, this was all the other answers and. So what about, I'm just curious, are these, oh, they are gonna work. Okay, what about conversations with parents? Because I know it happens. Maybe Sean, maybe it hasn't happened for you, new board members, maybe it hasn't.
Oh, sure.
It's already happened, okay? That parent, they come to you with that tough situation. How do we handle that?
Guide him to policy. It's the only, only right answer. I mean, you have to help and 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 I have helped him in the past with policy and getting to the right person to help him with policy.
I think along those lines, also just listening, but also if you involve yourself in the process. Before it becomes our duty as a board, then you have to excuse yourself when it becomes a discussion or an appeal later. If it gets to that stage.
Yeah, and what you just touched on is the hardest part of this process. So first thing, you wanna honor the conversation. Because this person, I mean, if I'm a parent, I've got a formal complaint, I'm really getting out, I'm coming to a board member, I'm coming in hot. And so we want to honor that. They're escalated and understand that we have this negative connotation around complaints. And you need to understand that your school district is processing complaints all the time. They just don't, you don't see them because they're getting resolved, you know, lower in the system, okay? So they're coming to you hot, you know, and you wanna, you wanna get them to the resources that you need. Honor that. Avoid hearing details of the complaint. Because we don't want ex parte communication. You know, and it's hard to do that and know when to do that because every situation is different. But there's gonna be a point where you're gonna have to say, I need to stop you there because under district policy, I may, this feels like a formal complaint. And I may need to hear that complaint on appeal and I won't be being able to fulfill that duty frequently. Here's policy K L, that's last piece, which is, I think, what Brad said, direct them to resources. Did you talk to the teacher? No, well, you need to talk to the teacher. Well, I talked to the teacher, but okay, then you need to go to the principal. You can act in an odd-budsman uh manner and do that. Next piece is let the superintendent know because we know that we don't have magic wand. We have no operational capacity in the district. But the superintendent does. So that's when you text Danny and say, hey. You got him on the chat and you get on the phone and say, hey, I just talked to this person, here's the kid's name. It's this building. And then hopefully you never hear anything more. It's this building and then hopefully you never hear anything more about it because it's gonna get resolved. Okay? Questions? Okay, I'm gonna raise the temperature on this. What about this complaints from staff?
No different.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Similar, except you can refuse to have that conversation. You know, because under policy B G, all communication of substance through the board and staff goes to the superintendent. So they are, they, this staff member is going out of lane. Now, Oregon is a small place. And you'd like to have lots of access to our elected officials. I like being able to pick up my cell phone and talk to Dan Ray for a lot of things in the world, but he's got too big, but I mean. I've had fairly close access to all our electives. You guys have very close access to our electives because you're electives as well and the same is true. So it's just part of Oregon culture and I know if it hasn't happened already, it's going to. You're gonna be at the barbecue and someone's there and we've had a couple glasses of Chardonnay and people start talking. They're gonna chew on your ear. So I'm gonna teach you how to violate policy B G. And not get in trouble, okay? I could get fired for this. You can't tell.
Good thing we're not recording.
First thing, if you you disclose to them, if you decide to have this conversation, you disclose to them. That you will speak with not the superintendent, sorry, these were for a church. So for your superintendent, now they can decide if they want to have this conversation because they know it's gonna get back to you. They may proceed, you're gonna do the same thing, honor the conversation, don't hear any details of the complaint. Direct them to their resources. Did you talk to your building principal? No. Go talk to your building principal, why are you talking to me? Did you file a grievance? No. Come talk to your union leadership, why are you talking to me? Okay, there are pathways for this conversation, proper pathways, direct them back to them. And then you must, must, must follow up with that person that aren't texted fun. No, you're gonna follow up with your superintendent immediately or nearly immediately. I only pulled this maneuver a few times while I was on the school board. The last time I did it, it was. It was during the pandemic, how Gal reach out to me and face, she didn't message me on Facebook. She had had a change of working conditions. Yes, she had talked to her principal, but still hadn't gotten there. So she was like. I don't know who else to talk to. Okay, well, I'm gonna talk to the superintendent. He's like, okay. So we got together for coffee. She got a twofer because I was meeting with board chair at the same time. So she got me and board chair. And she talked to us for a little bit, we got the gist of it and then we're like, okay, we gotta know, we'll go ahead and pass it on to superintendent. She walked off and I texted Brian at that moment. And she was walking away, five minutes later, I was on the phone with the superintendent, it was a Saturday. Passed it off and that was the last thing I heard. That was the system working as intended. Okay? The key thing here, the most important piece, is that you must follow up with your superintendent. Because you're always cultivating trust. You guys are a team, you'll always go together, never alone, okay? Superintendent, have I said anything that makes you uncomfortable?
Well, I just, I I want the board to know that um. They are not risking handcuffs, right? Uh, the second thing is, you know, there's a lot of um. Conversations that board members will be in. What distinguishes just standard from, is it them asking for a special meeting? Or is it them speaking about a specific circumstance? Because like, there, there's always gonna be some people around you that are going to be expressing opinion. Which is not a complaint, right? So what defines that? Is it an act of, is there some? How would they know that they are not just listening to someone they know and that it is in fact a complaint?
If they're asking you to do something. If there's an inherent advocacy now. The longer you're in these seats, the longer you're gonna get, the end of working and being around these people. And other folks in the district staff, they're gonna get more and more comfortable with you. There will come a time probably where you're gonna have to say, hmm, gotta hold you there. Are you just blowing smoke or blowing steam off steam or is this real? Do I need to really pay attention to this? Albany's not that big of a town. I mean, I've worked with, well, the biggest district I've worked with is the San Francisco, and even those guys. These interactions. I mean, I suppose there's a probably a scale where you become unassailable, but that's probably like L A unified or something like that. Yeah, the key point here is. Feed that information back to your superintendent. And this is where you as board members can act as eyes and ears of the superintendent. Again, getting back to why do we have school boards? It's because he's only one guy, he can't be everywhere at once. And so you're getting, you're able to funnel information in so he can have the superhuman situational awareness. Because he's got five people embedded in the community, listening and being engaged.
Thank you.
Yeah. What are the investigative powers of the board and its members?
Tell someone else to do it?
I mean, are you sure as individuals or collectively?
Yeah, either, both.
I don't think we have any individual power. Collectively, I think we could ask for an order of investigation.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
So yeah, as, yes, you do not, as you don't get to do any fact finding on your own, you have to. You have to ta- retain a third party to do investigations.
Higher done, yeah.
Yep, good. I love this question. I learned this about halfway through my tenure on the, on the board. I learned that attorneys can't lie to you. They're ethically required to tell you the truth. So when you're hearing a complaint, you're in the executive session, you're getting the report and all that stuff. You can ask them, was there a violation of policy or law? And they have to tell you yes or no. And if there wasn't, it's probably something that you can set aside. Or it's in the wrong channel. There are ti- there will be times. When people will try to bring a, something that should be addressed in policy, they'll try to bring it through the complaint process. And folks do this and it's. It's one of the problems that we have with the way we build the system. They don't know the uh, another pathway to do it, so they they file a formal complaint. And probably what in those situations, and I've been into it in a couple times where district did everything right, but it didn't feel good. It's not the way we wanted our schools to respond and and navigate that situation, so we had to take it. We'd have to set it aside and then bring it back around into a policy process or an overly an oversight process, it was procedural. Need to be sensitive to that. This is a great shortcut. So be sure to remember to ask your attorneys, was there a violation of policy or law?
Our attorney or their attorney?
Uh, whoever's providing the report, yeah, it would be the the attorney that's representing the board.
Copy that.
Oh, that's a good question. When does the board vote in the executive session?
No, never.
Hmm, there's one time. District staff, come on. Oh, Chris, what is it?
Oh, student expulsion, that's right. Yeah, student expulsion, that's right.
It's just a.
I'm actually an expulsion officer. I've been to a few of those.
Oh, well, I'm sorry the graphics are all messed up on this, but this is a fun scenario. Let's see if I can read it. Um, hold on. The board chair accepts an invitation from the local union president, this never happened. The board chair accepts an invitation from the local union president to meet at a neighborhood coffee shop. What was meant to be a casual check in turns, turns into a, turns problematic when the two are spotted chatting and laughing together. The timing could not be worse than the district is currently in collective bargaining with the union. A parent surprised to see the two meeting privately, well, in a coffee shop privately. Snaps a photo and posts it, you know, to a community Facebook group with a caption. Why is our board chair secretly meeting with the union president while negotiations are going on? What deals are being cut? By the next morning, the post has dozens of comments, some questioning the board's integrity and others demanding answers about the negotiations. Oh my goodness. So what's going well?
At least they're, they're talking, however. Boards do not bargain with unions.
Okay? What else is going well? I just wrote this one. I mean, this is not verbatim true, but we, we know, we know all know this, this has happened before. Hey, parents recognize school board members, that's positive. And they recognize, you know, union leaders, that's, that's kind of cool. Anything else good?
No, no press is bad press.
No press yet. Yet. Yeah, okay, what could be better here?
Well, the optics are terrible.
Optics are terrible. So Brad, I think you you hit them on the the biggest thing here, which is, and I I work for O S B A, which really is Pace. And so where you're your insurer, so. The thing that I immediately go to is that, yeah, they're meeting, they're engaged in collective bargaining. We got a board member meeting with union leaders, that could be side bargaining and that could be a loss for Pace and so. Yeah, there's liability here. Yeah, that could be, that could be a violation there, so that's a, could be against the law. What else is being, what else is, what could be better here or what's being broken here?
Well, there's too much at stake. This is a really indiscreet thing to do, even if it's not illegal.
Big time.
So there's a judgment issue, that's. Biggest problem for me. Why are you doing this? Whose boat are you trying to sink here? Everyone's?
So the school board runs on trust, it's the current currency that we, we, you know, do our work in. So what trust is being broken here?
To other board members? If they see a photo and it wasn't arranged.
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, public trust is blown, big time.
Superintendent's gonna wonder what the heck's going on behind his back.
Yep, superintendent, yeah, trust with the superintendent, it's blown. Blown with the rest of the board, it's like, what were you thinking? Yeah, lots of broken trust here. How do you think that's gonna impact negotiations? Next bargaining session, how's that gonna go?
The question, just generally, I'm turning my head around this. How much, how appropriate I think this is, bargaining notwithstanding. And I'm trying to just, I mean, I think anytime an individual board member meets with an individual as a board member, that's probably to to deal with school district stuff. That's probably inappropriate, right? Like, you're not really supposed to do that.
Yeah, you're right. Why not? Well, let's un, let's unpack, let's unpack that.
Like, I don't know, is this different than if I met with, let's say, the head of the principal's group, or if I met with the principal and, you know, just. Heard his concerns about how Andy's treating the principal, is that different than meeting with the union president?
Somewhat different, yeah, well, and no, it's not, it's, they're both kind of wrong for the same reason.
Okay.
So what would be the contents of that, of those conversations? Let's just take this one. What are we gonna talk about? What is the chair and the, and the union president gonna talk about?
Well, see, and that's the thing, especially in my keys, I could see it being really productive. Like, I could say, hey, principal that I know really well, what do you think of the new teacher evaluation? How's that actually working out? Are teachers buying into it? Do you feel like the district is a good, I mean, I could ask all the right questions and it could be entirely in my head appropriate, but I don't actually think it is probably. In this role in this chair, is my guess, but I, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Hold on to that scenario because I I want to have that conversation too.
I would say kind of from not an educational background, what if the person that's on the board used to be a teacher? And now they're talking to the person, like, they're just friends, if they have a personal relationship outside of board and union, they're just actually people that like each other. Do you just not talk the whole time that you're negotiating, just in case?
Not in coffee shops.
Yeah, not in a coffee shop.
Is it worse if they're coming over to your house? Like, are you going over to theirs or? I mean, it's just, I, I'm not a former educator, so I don't really have that.
Yeah, I mean, um.
Dilemma, but.
Here's a good, great case in point, uh, oh, now I'm gonna forget. Former um, C E A president, when I was on the board. Uh, we were both involved in the Corvallis Sustainability Coalition, we were doing, doing stuff completely separate from the district. But if we were in bargaining, I would not meet with her. One on one in a coffee shop, never, if I was a board member. Just because of the optics, you know, you never get to take the hat off, even if we're talking about, you know, this other work, doesn't matter. So the contents of the, you, you know, the purpose of a union is to advocate for the working conditions and compensation for. That labor group. In what capacity does the chair have the ability to impact those things? None. There's no, there's nothing to have a conversation about. Now, if we weren't in bargaining, there are teams. Uh, where board chair and superintendent meet with union leaders. You know, on a monthly or quarterly basis, when we're not in bargaining. Because there is a conversation to have between union leader and a superintendent and it's fine to have the board there. And if that's a collaborative relationship and everything's on the up and up, then that's a really great gesture because. It's the board communicating, hey, we care about this relationship, we're gonna show up and participate and and be part of that conversation. That's fine, but as long as it's a healthy relationship. Let's shift to your administrators one. You just asked a whole bunch of technical questions that are really interesting and would be useful. And if you met one on one with a su- with a pr- a principal, you know, that would all go into your head and none of your other colleagues. And so that's something on a board, we always want to go together and we want to guard against asymmetry of information. We don't want you to have all this great, rich information. Better as a board chair to say, hey, superintendent, is there a time when we can get our building administrators together? And so our board members can have these conversations with our, with our, our principals. To get an idea of how they're thinking about doing this work. Really rich conversations that will definitely impact your decision making in the boardroom. And we can come up with ideas on how to do that. Because I love those conversations. Yeah, so the impact here is bad. So I just uh, heard from a, from a superintendent who had a board chair that navigated this correctly. But the union leader reached out to the new board chair, new member, new board chair. And new, the board member immediately checked in with superintendent and said, this doesn't feel right to me. How would you like me to respond? They processed it together and then she turned down the meeting, said, we're in bargaining, not appropriate. So they'll meet later on, but not right now. Six o'clock. Great. Ah, and I'm so glad that this is displays well. So. Next time we, we're gonna talk about meetings, but. Just because hard things come up, say it's bargaining, say it's, what's a hard thing you you guys are talking about? How about the cellphone ban? Is that a fun to- topic?
It's going to be.
Okay, so. I wish the animation worked on this, that's okay. Focus framework is, is an old, older tool, it's from Lighthouse back in the early two thousands. You know, when, it was something that we used when I was learning to be a school board member. And my team makes a little fun of me because I keep teaching it, but it's so darn useful. Uh, for navigating tough conversations. Um, and so this is a tool that you can use if you have work sessions around hard, thorny topics like a cellphone ban. And so it's a way to help the board now sift through the information. And stay in its governance role and get, and stay in that informed oversight position. So the first thing that you want to address is this blue, the blue arrow is setting clear expectations. What do you want for your kids? Where do we want to go with this? This is high level. So what are our greatest expectations and hopes in this area for our students and for our district? I mean, what's the outcome that you're aiming at? You know, with, and you, I'm sure you all have opinions on cell phones and mobile technology and all. You know, with, and you, I'm sure you all have opinions on cell phones and mobile technology and all that stuff. And to take the time to get that all on the table. Going back to that why piece, how we started this session, talking about our why, why are you on the school board? We're gonna talk about the why of mobile technology and why we're gonna think about a cell phone ban and how we're gonna navigate this policy. What do we want it to do? Next one is learn together as a leadership team. You need to know what's in the governor's EO. You need to know what's, you know, all the other components of that, other regulatory things. What is the ped, the education science around cell phone bans and how that impacts kids, blah, blah, blah. You have all these trained professionals. You need to get all the expertise out of them and onto the table and in your heads. So learning together as a leadership team, so you're ready to make an informed decision. You might need to make some resource allocations. The one that pops into my head is those groovy little, what, their, the little blue pouches, whatever.
Yonder pouches.
Yeah, that are really expensive, but I mean, maybe that's the direction you guys wanna go. You have to create the conditions for success. I'm gonna take a bunny trail. School boarding is, anybody know tree farmers? Any tree farmers?
What type of tree?
Douglas fir.
Oh, no.
What do we grow here? Come on. No, tree farmers. Tree farmers are a really interesting group of people. Because they don't think in terms of years or even decades. They think in terms of generations. I'm planting trees today that I'll, that my grandkids will harvest and I'm not gonna be around. I'll be in the ground. So school board, you are gonna be setting condition, setting the condition for success today. That will may take years to come to fruition. You may not be in office to see that fully. So you need to think across, you know, we think in terms like four-year terms or, you know. Think along longer time horizons because this work takes time to unfold. It's a big ship and it takes ti, on time for it to turn. So creating the conditions for success, you need to set your district team up for success. We're talking about a cell phone ban, so. What is the board need to do to ensure the expectations? Remember, we set clear expectations. What do we want the outcomes for our kids? That you can actually get there. Next is holding the system accountable, tracking that. Remember, you commission the journey. That's what you're doing here. You're commissioning a journey. And you're gonna track progress. You're gonna have those ports of call along the way, those intermediate goals. How are we gonna, what does success look like? And how, what are we gonna look like when are those stops along the way? And then building public will to succeed, which is really about how are we going to engage community? How are we gonna communicate about this? That's out, information going out. How are we gonna bring community in? What do we not know? And let me tell you, moms and dads, they have opinions about cell phone bans. Buckle up. I'm a dad. I have opinions. I have very clear thoughts on the subject. I'm happy to tell, no, I'm just kidding.
You, you're in the Corvallis district, right?
That's right.
Perfect.
And they're gonna get, they're gonna hear from me. No. Um, but yeah, how are we gonna bring people along in this? How are we gonna, when we've processed, gone through this and made the decision, how are we gonna communicate that decision? Ensure that everybody's heard. And this is all stuff that you're gonna do in this room. Before you actually move all that into a business meeting and cast a vote. So this is Focus Framework is all work session material, preparing the board to make a decision. Like I said, you get the hardest questions, the toughest questions, and then these guys have to follow through on it. Question thoughts on that? We're gonna talk about more meeting stuff in our la, next session. So we'll talk more about work sessions and how to structure that and what to do. Twenty minutes, great. Oh, yeah. It's funny. Yes, puts you in formed oversight. I should do this, left it on. Oh, these, I forget these. How about this one? Is it board work? These are, these are actually used to be old slides. Now they're, anyway, it doesn't matter. So reviewing applications, interviewing selected candidates and make recommendations for hiring a teacher. Is that board work? Why not?
Cause they're already doing it.
What, okay.
So we don't need to.
What about a, an assistant superintendent? That's a, that's a really big, it's a big job. It's high level. Should the board member, no? So truth in advertising?
One person.
I actually sat on a hiring committee for the assistant superintendent. And let me tell you, I was confused. I didn't know any better at the time. I know better now. Yeah, there's, there's no expectation that anybody on the school board. Knows anything about pedagogy or coaching or school administration. I, I didn't know how to evaluate. It was really tough.
Question upcoming.
Sure.
Tonight, this board is going to be talking about two board members to represent the board. To the long-range facility committee.
Oh, interesting.
I think there's a value there so that we can ensure that the committee and the board do not diverge greatly. Right? Uh, but it may not be that, beyond Sean, that there's like expertise from any of those. What are your thoughts on it?
I definitely have thoughts because I have served as a board member and have, has heard from a long-range facilities planning committee. And have also served on the Corvallis Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, uh, this year. So. Um, I think whenever a board member is in the room, it changes the conversation. You need to just understand that. Whenever you put a board member in the room, um, how you show up in the room really, really matters. I think it's important for whoever, if you decide to put, uh, someone in the room, that board members are there as a liaison, they're to listen. Not necessarily to participate. There may be some times when the committee may wanna check in with you. But on particular things, but I would, I would caution against board members actively becoming involved. And really rely on the wisdom of your facilities folks. You have amazing professionals that are running your district facilities. And then the folks that you've selected for, for the committee. And hopefully, you know, you've selected wisely and have folks from doing that. But that would be my counsel there. And then, you know, have them, you know, have your liaisons report to the board. This is what, what the committee talked about and what's going on. And then await that report. I don't know how that sets, but, and you don't necessarily have to do what I tell you to do. That's not necessarily the right way. But understand that if you do choose board members, if you choose to insert yourself into a committee and speak and participate. Understand that you are speaking with, um, your voice has more weight than other members of the committee, just by virtue of being a board member. Same holds for, you've probably seen, well, those of you who've been on the board for a while, you've seen that in your budget committee. Where you, your board members have more influence.
What's your thoughts on board members being in union bargaining?
Yeah, I think, I think it's an important symbolic gesture. Um, that board members be there and observe that the board has represented a liaison to bargaining. It shows that you care. To do otherwise would, I think would be insulting. It would be insulting to your staff, your district staff who work really hard. And the uni, your union members who are working equally hard to work through that stuff. Bargaining is hard work.
Well, I was confused, I guess, by your comments that we should not be at the facilities. But should be at bargaining. So that's why I was trying to get some clarification.
I was saying if you're gonna be there. I would just keep your comments very, very, I wouldn't participate. I would just listen. And that's your role in, in bargaining as well. Is to listen and observe the, the proceedings. You're gonna caucus with the district. Um, but you shouldn't participate and you're there representing the board, not necessarily the district. You're observing the, the negotiation and that's happening between the district and the association. Does that make sense? You may be called upon to represent the intent or wishes of the board. So the board should have given the district teams parameters for negotiations. You know, there's budget parameters and things, goals that. You know, there are certain thresholds that we can't go over because there's only so much pie, right? So that's something that the district team and the board should discuss in executive session. That's one of the reasons that we can go into executive session. We have those discussions on what our budget parameters will be for negotiations and then we go into that. And you may be asked to, to speak to the intent and the hopes of the board, but that's gonna be parap, fairly limited. You can also ask questions and this also is really dependent on your relationship with your associations. Probably pretty strained right now. But you may ask clarifying questions, but I would definitely check in with your superintendent. And your bargaining team to get clear on what's gonna be comfortable for you folks. The last thing you wanna do is derail negotiations or do something that's gonna disrupt the proceedings. The key thing is you wanna, you want fair negotiations.
So just to add to that, I, um. Right. Obviously, we want to assume the best intentions. I've had fifteen years of experience with board members serving on these different committees. I have not had someone like take over or run way out of their lane in a way that would cause me to regret it or bring them. Uh, there's of course questions, but, um, I think there's a healthiness and honoring of a given committee.
Yeah. And that's coming from experience. I, I negotiated for two contracts with CEA and, and two with. Oh, now I'm gonna forget, OCA, our, our classified union. So I sat on both when I was on the Corvallis board there at the end. Deep respect for both district team and for union. It's a lot of hard work. Good questions. Love this. Ooh, it's a board work. Establishing strategic priorities for the school or for the district. In this case.
Yeah, for the district, yeah.
For sure. In collaboration with your district team. It's not something we do in isolation. Again, there's no expectation that we have any skill in pedagogy or school administration. And your district has already done a bunch of work. They're required to do work, integrated guidance and other things that are strategically aligned. Review enrollment reports to keep, keep track of the number of students in the district.
For informational purposes.
Yeah. That's progress tracking. Absolutely. Yeah, that's definitely board work. Okay. What else do we, oh, we can't read this. Oh, skip over it. Ooh, a board member is approached by a community member after a board meeting. The community member asked to see the superintendent's contract.
We listened to the last meeting.
Send him to Chris Green.
Yep, that's easy. It's posted online somewhere.
So I'm glad that we know this one. Yeah, it's public record. It's no big deal. Uh, let's see. Oh, sorry, guys. All my slides got re-formatted. Oh, wait. During a recent, uh, rep, okay, hold on.
During a re, recent presentation by the superintendent, the board member questioned the lack of detail in the disaggregated student results for each school goal. While the data provides good global view of student success at the school, the board member wanted to see the data broken down by individual classrooms. In each school so that they can judge, judge individual, uh, teacher effectiveness.
Oops.
Let's see, what do we have for prompts? Is this board work?
No, that's operational stuff. And, and you're, you're getting to the point where you could embarrass some teachers if you're not careful.
Well, let's break this up. What if we just looked at the first sentence? We are, we're asking for a lack of detail in the disaggregated student results. We should be, oh, I touched it again. What's an appropriate level of detail?
We should be looking at it from a thirty thousand foot view as opposed to the, in the classroom view.
I mean, we currently look at it school by school for a while.
Okay.
We, schools do presentations, show us disaggregated data.
Sure.
So we see grade levels, school by school.
And then you're.
I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but that's where we're at.
Yeah. I don't know. Is that appropriate? Does that feel comfortable?
Yeah, I think you can get to small schools where it can become personally identifiable to the single teacher in that grade or something like that. So.
Yeah.
That would be where we would probably not do it.
Yeah, we're not gonna evaluate individual, individual staff members. The exception where that gets a little grade is when we're talking about principals because we're at the building level. But principals are tough. They can handle it. But ultimately, we're coming from a collaborative space, so. But yeah, we're not gonna look at individual. What, you've talked about disaggregated data. How do you disaggregate your data? How do you slice data?
Subgroups.
Yeah. What are your subgroups? Like racial categories?
Yeah, underserved population, special education.
Yep.
Basically, just off the report card, this ain't your report card.
Yeah.
We're not doing anything different or special.
Yeah. Okay. What else do we have? Ooh.
On board, fine, great. The board is discussing the upcoming budget process at a work session. A board member brings up that there is no mention of overall school goals or the strategic plan in the process. And I will add in the budget document. Is that board work?
Yes.
Yeah, most definitely. Most important role the board plays in the budget process is ensuring that district priorities are reflected in the resource allocations that come. Shouldn't be a surprise, shouldn't be a problem, but you should be able to see that, pull it out, and it should be clear enough that, that members of the community can understand that. Okay. I'm gonna skip forward. Oh, yeah. I wanna pause. Do you guys have any scenarios? Any scenarios that are popping up for you?
I mean, the big one I had, I feel like you covered it, which was bargaining and the board role and bargaining, and we're not part of the bargaining team, nor do we engage in bargaining. There's gonna be a lot of misunderstanding about that in the community over the last year or so, but you, I feel like you'd covered that pretty well.
Yeah. You might talk publicly about what your expectations, what you want, bargaining to look like, when you want the relationship with your, with your situations. Are you guys bargaining right now?
Not yet. Class fights coming up.
Class fight would be next spring.
Maybe talk about that. I mean, because it's a thorny topic. So pull out that focus framework, have a work session, invite your union leaders in and have gritty conversations. It ain't gonna be comfortable. It won't be fun, but might get to that. Because I guarantee you, if you can get a collaborative la, relationship with your associations. Things get a lot better. Does get a lot better. Okay. Check in. Any new insights? Why, I'm just gonna put all these prompts up. Any new insights? Anything bubbling up? Uh, so the last slides are about, um, tools for doing your work. I said earlier that evaluating the superintendent is the board's single most powerful tool for fostering a relationship with the chief executive. Um, that is something that we, we support boards with. So superintendent evaluation is crucially important. Another one is board self-assessment. So that's something, uh, met with board leader and with superintendent and your administrative professional. We, we talked about a plan for, um, work that the board could do this year. Uh, this is step one. Um, next one will be, uh, reviewing your operating agreement. We have operating agreements. Dust those off. And then, uh, revise them. This is a new iteration of the board. And so there's probably gonna be some changes to that operating agreement. Okay? And then we'll talk about what you need, what you might, what comedians feel like going forward. This is broken up. There's board operating, you have board superintendent operating agreement. We're actually taking, uh, bringing board secretaries into that. So building components of operating agreements and including the administrative professional as well. We also do communication protocols. We'll embed that in that, in that conversation. You know, how do you want Andy to communicate when the worst happens? If that, or on a regular basis, we can go through all of that. Oh, I'm not gonna go into detail on superintendent evaluation process because I don't have time, but I'll just, uh, uh, let you know that. Do you guys use the COSA OSBA workbook?
Yeah, that's the standards, yeah.
Yeah, the eight standards. And so we, we partnered with our, with our sister organization, the, the Coalition of School Administrators. Uh, to develop, remember the, those twelve standards for boards? It's evidence-based. We did the same thing for superintendents. We created standards based on the behaviors that, that superintendents exhibit that have positive impacts on kids. And you can evaluate on that. You set goals. So, um, usually about this time of year, superintendents are bringing their goals to the board. And you guys collaboratively agree on what those performance goals are gonna be. In that process, you know, he's gonna bring evidence of his performance to those goals. Um, in that process, you know, he's going to bring evidence of his performance to those goals and to the standards. Um, coming in form of a dossier. It's not that thick. It's small, parsimonious. You should have quarterly check-ins. So probably your first one should be around October, after school has started, you know, we got the ship out of harbor and we're on our way. And then usually December, right before winter break, and then you get the superintendent's self-evaluation usually in January, February. Um, so evaluation, you get the portfolio, which is the evidence. Targeted feedback survey. Um, Andy's been doing this for a while, and so you've probably heard of the thirty, three sixty survey, which is kind of a broadcast climate survey. You don't do that. You have a targeted feedback survey. You target it in two respects. One, we hold you to three standards, um, and hopefully standards that are hard for the board to see, like instructional leadership or organizational management. Because you're not here every day with him, so getting a little more detail on that. It's also targeted with regard to the respondents. It's the people who work with him on a day-to-day basis that can actually inform his performance so that he can be a better superintendent, okay? And then formal evaluation, we support with that. So that's where you give him the scores and the explanations for it. Operating agreements, we're going to talk about this next time.
Tools and resources.
Resources, awesome. Um, we have a website. Uh, you can access our tools, you know, go to departments and training events we provide. We just did our summer board conference, annual convention, I really urge you to be there and meet and rub shoulders with your colleagues from all over the state. Different, you know, all sorts of units. It's one of the best things. And then, of course, best practices, that's what, uh, uh, annual convention is all about. Innovation and best practices in school governance. Yeah, there's resources on our website, I guess. Uh, news clips, you should be getting these. You should get Word Ed News and news clips. You should be getting those. I've seen none again from Brad. If you're not getting this, let me know and I'll, we'll get you plugged in. If you want to keep your finger on the pulse of education and education governance, it's a good way to do it. Word Ed News is awesome. Yeah, Jake aggregates that every day. This is my team. Oh, I didn't change the slide. Um, yeah, so my team, there's, uh, we have four trainers and then Reginald Ben is our administrative analyst who helps us do all the, all the logistical work for us. So we're available. We're only a phone call away. Literally, I mean, I have my cell phone right here. I have cards. You do not have to do this alone. And I'm literally, I'm literally twenty minutes, I live twenty minutes from here, so, you know, do you not feel like you're ever alone? Uh, questions? I think I'm ending on time. Pick up your cell phone right now and hit the Skeworker. I'll be amazed at that, right? Well, he's doing it like right there. That's the evaluation. Any questions?
We have to go over there.
Stump the trainer for four minutes. Any question?
Are we, did you say we're talking about evaluations next time or you were just going over that as one of the options?
Okay. If you like, if you like, I'd be happy to work with you. That service is hourly, so it's all a carton. You can use me as much or as little as you like. And then we had also discussed doing a sports self-evaluation in the spring. And that's a fee service, although I'm going to try to bundle this all into one contract and save you some money. No questions? Any question? Anything on school board governance?
Do you think that's grown more technical? It does seem like the exec, the, um, Ethics Commission rules, as we listened to them presented last year. Uh, I have always, in my past, I haven't always had the days open to do it here, sent out a written report of just summary things that I don't think would ever come before them, but I just give them information. And have always said, don't reply all, right? Don't in any way debate any of this. Do you see that that is outside the bounds or within the bounds of ethical practice?
So what I'm hearing you say is that you provide like a weekly report?
Yeah, I'll just put like, like, I think I sent one out last Friday, right? With just three or four things that are just like, you know, different things to just give a little background or say where we are on something as we go forward.
So you're welcome to, you, you know, you can, yeah, send that out, uh, information that they may not get, operational information that you think is relevant to them. Even if it's something that may come before them in the future, you can send that because you're the superintendent. The trick here is send it BCC, like a carton, a copy, so they can't reply. They can only reply. So that's the trick. And you can do the same thing with each other. If you're going to share, say you're going to share an article, say, you know, I'm all reporting that. This great article with the seventy-four and, you know, I want to share it with you, I'm going to send it BCC, so you can only reply to me and it can't be deliberation. But we're not going to reply anyway, uh, but we could bring that into a board meeting and discuss it.
Okay.
But yeah, informational reports from the superintendent, all you need. Good question. Uh, I think that's time. I yield back to the chair.
Thank you so much.
Good.
Vince, thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
We'll need to conclude the meeting when we're done to take us out of session.
Yeah, do I need to take a motion to adjourn?
Let's do one.
No, you do not.
No motion to adjourn, just adjourn.
No further business.
Okay, no further business. We are adjourned.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. There's our governance calendar. Next thing, so we had previously scheduled a September 16th listening session, but our OSBA training will continue on that date, and so we need to move the listening session, and the recommendation by staff is to move it to the next month, October 21st. So what we're looking for is a potential motion and a discussion around moving our next listening session from September 16th to October 21st. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve changing the September 16th listening session date to October 21st to better accommodate our calendar.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Anybody have any concerns, questions?
No, just, I just wanted to say that I'm really, these are important to me. I kind of helped get these started, and so I'm glad, I mean, I understand we have the OSBA training as a part of the OSBA program.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The agenda's approved. First thing is board business, our annual board governance calendar, and you can see the draft there. And what we're looking for is a motion to approve this sort of calendar of rollout presentations, et cetera.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the board governance calendar as presented.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. There's our governance calendar. Next thing, so we had previously scheduled a September sixteenth listening session, but our OSBA training will continue on that date, and so we need to move the listening session. And the recommendation by staff is to move it to the next month, October twenty first. So what we're looking for is a potential motion and a discussion around moving our next listening session from September sixteenth to October twenty first. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve changing the September sixteenth listening session date to October twenty first to better accommodate our calendar.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Anybody have any concerns, questions?
No, just, I just wanted to say that I'm really, these are important to me. I kind of helped get these started, and so I'm glad, I mean, I understand we have the OSBA training. We just finished two and a half hours tonight. We've got another two and a half and hours in the next meeting, and those make for long days. But I'm glad that we're continuing on these listening sessions because I think they're really valuable.
I agree, and I actually kind of think October might be a better month anyway because six weeks of school instead of two for more people to have things that they may want to come and talk to us about.
Agreed.
We considered having them focused around a particular topic.
You know, it's never been brought up before.
We did have controversial topics two years ago. We would like you guys to at least consider, I'm not sure how far into the process we will be with facilities, but that might be a topic as well. I know that Sage Architects has asked us to consider a couple of community input sessions.
Okay. I do know that they can be, the attendance can fluctuate wildly based on what's happening in the ether, right? So having a targeted topic might help attendance on times when we would otherwise not see anybody.
As long as, you know, they're not limited to, because there are sometimes things that need to become brought up. We can have a focus, but the whole point of listening session is to get problems brought out from the community into our purview so that we can then be able to take steps and deal with them, so.
It'd have two parts.
Yeah, a focus and then a general, yeah. Actually, I think that's a good idea. Okay, moved and seconded and discussed to move the next session to October twenty first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's moved. Okay, next is our Long Range Facility Advisory Committee. We just talked about this a little in our training work session. In my opinion, so the trainer said he wasn't sure if board members would be on that committee or not. In my opinion, Andy thinks he would benefit from having board members on there, so in my opinion, we should have two board members on there to support him. Any discussion on that? Any thoughts? Anybody want to volunteer?
Do you want to say why you want two board members on?
Yeah, I think it's just really important. The board will still stand as the senate in this process. The committee is an advisory committee to the board, and we will give them that mission. And I think it's really important that there is some form of consistent communication and reconciliation through the process so that a committee does not go out and diverge from what the board would want. Right? And so I think it becomes then not necessarily an act of expertise in contracting or public contracting or electioneering, it becomes just listening and communication. And as I just spoke a little bit ago, these board members would be no less and no more than other members of the committee while they are on that committee.
Excuse me.
I'll volunteer as tribute.
Okay, you're interested in doing it? Okay.
I would love to see one of our two new board members step up for that. I mean, I'm willing to do it, but I think it would be a great experience.
Yeah, I'm willing to do it.
Okay.
Well, I would do it, but.
But you're good with these guys?
I think they could be trusted.
Okay. All right, then, so I guess I would entertain a motion to add Sean and Stephanie to add the board members to the Long Range Facility Committee.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Sean and Stephanie to the Long Range Facility Advisory Committee.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. Okay, we are now on to District Leadership Team Updates. Superintendent Report.
We have that up, is that up on the screen right now? It is. Look at that. I did that by voice. You guys understand that. So we, you guys have been asking for these. We have a third goal. It is not as developed as the first two, but we do have a goal that will generate a process throughout the year and will be regularly communicated. So if we go back to the first one, we will continue work on our instructional framework this year. We'll take you in depth a little bit into that. It's really important that we look at just, not just the results. You guys are going to see reading results through the year. The new accountability has required that we put out, give you guys three district-wide updates on where we are on reading. You will have other data that you will look at, and of course, if you guys think that there's another piece of data, we're happy to share that as well. But for the instructional framework, this is an important piece of work in the district just to make sure that everybody has a really consistent understanding of what good instruction looks like. The second goal is for the Long Range Facility Advisory Committee, and we'll take you through that just a little bit. And then number three, and I want to thank Chris McLaughlin for her ideas and concerns coming forward, and we will develop a comprehensive communication plan this year, through the year, to end with something that we think is going to be effective. Right? So there are many aspects of that, and we'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. But we'll start with the instructional framework. So I want to point you guys, we are going to build a broad base of knowledge in teachers and supporting practices and administrators about the Center for Educational Leadership's five D rubric that results in common language and common practice in the five high-leverage categories. They are purpose, in other words, purposeful teaching to an outcome, student engagement, curriculum and pedagogy, assessment for learning, classroom environment and culture. Those are the five. There is a sixth, professional collaboration and communication. So how you work with other people, that points us directly at the learning culture that we want to build. So this is an old statement, "Culture eats strategy for breakfast." And culture is incredibly important, and so much of what we're doing here is to work not always on the strategy. And you guys heard Vince talk about the outcomes and looking at data. We run the risk sometimes at the district level, looking at eighty-eight hundred students' worth of data, at getting too far to the end, and we are like Alabama fans who think national championship or bust. It's a failure if it's not a national championship. But what we have to think about is, how do the coaches coach? How do the teacher, how do the students consistently perform? Those are the things that lead to those goals. And so the same thing is true of a district. We want to go beyond the strategy and define and build a culture, and that is what we value and how employees interact to achieve their goals. Buildings become teams. Administrators add a significant dimension to the work of teachers when they can help them to reflect on their own practice, because we want a culture of self-reliant adult learners. We want a culture then of students who are in charge of their own learning, because it's clear what they're trying to be taught today. They can determine whether they know it. And a thriving workplace culture is as designed and constructed as a good strategy, and that's really what we're about. We believe that this is an incredibly important piece of the district that we need to work on and build. So there's kind of a progression, and it's there in the brown. Common awareness, common understanding, common language, common practice. So one of the things that is true, so full disclosure, we had a Weight Watchers club that used to meet at the district office in Staten, and they met in a room, and hate to admit this, but they had a soft drink machine in there, and I was always going in there, and I got to know them pretty well because I was always getting my soft drink. Led to several conversations, no intervention, just want to be clear, but they had kind of a statement. If we don't see people come in and visit with us about this every week, we can assume that we will see them in a month or two, starting over, because you have to have support, you have to have the feedback. The check-in was they had to sit on, step on a scale. And so that is about human behavior and our ability and our need to constantly reinforce, and that becomes reinforcing powerfully when teachers reinforce teachers. And so common practice, which is what we're looking for, is going to emerge when teachers routinely collaborate, plan lessons together, and visit each other's classrooms to ensure practices are aligned and consistent. This last year, we did not evaluate teachers. We were working to build common awareness through to common understanding. I was amazed at the level of change and feedback we got about, hey, that was pretty good. We focus on one thing at a time. We got to know that pretty well. And so do I think that we already have that to heart where teachers can name all five elements of purpose? Probably not. Right? We will have to continue to build that. In twenty-four, twenty-five, as I said, the dimensions were introduced, we saw a ton of change in a year when we did not evaluate. The evaluation is required by the state, but is not necessary for learning. That is a requirement. What we want to do is create situations where teachers are constantly going to learn and change behavior and help each other to do that. At the Alt Retreat, most administrators who discuss, we showed them all four levels and kind of some characteristics, and they believed that we are close to common understanding. There were a couple of schools that said, I think we're still at common awareness. Right? So that is really the first blush, and it, you just heard Vince talk about how when a math curriculum is adopted or a language arts curriculum is adopted, sometimes it is two years till teachers really get a good handle on that and know what to do with it. Same is true of this. We are, we are working to change the culture and work towards a common practice. So one of the things we're doing is, is just making the work of teaching a shared and public practice. That doesn't mean that teachers can surprise each other and point out what they did wrong. It is about working on something together, then going and seeing it, having follow-up conversations. We will have administrative and teacher observations this year. Bruce has got a couple of different ways that that can happen. I put in red, administrators will define protected time to be in classrooms. We estimate that the required number of observations this year will take about three hours a week in order for that to be accomplished by principals. We have research that shows really great principals that are focused on academics spend roughly one day a week. So we are on the way to that, but when we say protected time, we are working to make sure that they have protected their time, that when they are in classrooms, that they can't be called out because a parent phone call, because they are working with staff and students. So we must now work to support secretaries. They must have other people that they have detailed out to respond to behavior during that time, where we are truly focusing on instruction. They do have a greater number of observations this year. I'm not sure that it is still, we are on our way slowly to best practice. Confidence is built through demonstrated ability. We want to get people in more and more. And of course, teachers will have the opportunity to observe each other's instruction as well. Yes, Chris?
Is there a priority for class coverage so they can get out to see? Because that's always an issue.
Bruce has a kind of a model there where the teachers are working on that. So, and we can give you guys more detail on that as well. Here's an interesting one, semi-controversial. Magic School and NODA Artificial Intelligence will be used by administrators and teachers to review lessons either on video or with a transcript. So this year, we will have the ability to audiotape a lesson and to load that up and get a timestamped verbatim of what occurred in the classroom. The great advantage of it is the immediacy of the feedback. We listened to the Collaborative Steering Committee. One building has moved into this and has begun to do it. The number one thing they said is, I didn't do a lesson and then wait four months for a write-up. Right? So we were able to turn that into a same-day feedback or the next morning feedback, and so we think that that could be really important. The other thing that we have done is we have taken every training that has been given in the district on the cell, we have taken the cell itself, and we have loaded that into Magic School, and so a teacher could take feedback and put that into Magic School and would have feedback on how they are doing across the different standards. And that, I think that's four minutes, and it can come back. Down at the bottom, though, you will notice, well, the other thing before we get there, teachers have the ability to use this as well. So if a teacher taped themselves, they could immediately turn that in and get their own feedback. And so what we are hoping to do is accelerate the feedback cycle, and again, by allowing them to also access this, we are hoping to build self-reliant learners as teachers, where they can get feedback many more times than an administrator could come in and give feedback. Because that's always the pressure. It takes a lot of work to get this done, write it up and get it back out. You can't ask me to do too much, so then we begin to do less and less. It stands, we are in a development stage on this. No teacher who is not willing to has to go and use Magic School or, right? Because the last sentence there, AI cannot replace administrators, eighty-twenty rule will apply. The rule on artificial intelligence is it's never great. You need to take it the rest of the way. Right? I kind of equate it to close captioning on television, you know, where you see words misspelled and stuff? So you can get something, you can turn it around pretty quick, but it is still imperfect. It still rests on the administrator's judgment. Right?
I have a couple of questions before we move on to the other two then. So first of all, big fan of using AI anytime new technology comes along, but there's unanticipated problems and there's, you don't know what you don't know. Are you guys working with anybody outside of the district, other districts? Would you have a sort of a bounce ideas off of what collective of people you can work with?
So I think, one, we do have a district group working with Nathan Rousseau from the ESD. He's a really powerful person who can help lead us into more of the AI. Tim, what's Tim's last name? The technology director there, they are sitting in on a work group for us with AI, and Nathan's very abreast of that. The second group is the group that came up with the recommendations and the agreements around, you know, that teachers don't have to do this, is our own Collaborative Steering Committee, and they will spend time this year monitoring and seeing what the challenges are. But really, what we want to do is we want to hand this out to everybody, right? So that it can help everybody. It does not become an administrator's sole tool, and it's at their beck and call, and the only way that the teachers are learning would be what the administrator decides to publish there. You could, a teacher could do that, and I would also say, a teacher right now could put it on ChatGPT.
Yeah.
Because the cell would be available in some form to them.
Okay. Then my other question is the, around the collaboration and the culture stuff, originally when the district went to early release Wednesdays, that what we told the community is that's what that time was for, for teachers to work together, look at data, PLCs. I assume, we got away from that, is my understanding, or at least we've been accused of getting away from that in certain buildings. I assume that that intent is to get back to when, early release Wednesdays and using it for that purpose?
Yeah, and I think we would have been there this year, but we ended up converting those back to get more student contact time back.
Okay.
So as we go forward, we anticipate that there is going to be greater time to move forward, and we're going to monitor that. The district had moved to the practice of having staff meetings on those days, and it brings the classified in with them and creates a whole staff meeting atmosphere, which is good. So that's the one day a month that we are not going to have true PLCs.
Okay. It would be good, some sort of a, for me anyway, a report out of how that's going. I'm just really interested in how the PLCs and the collaboration is, is going and is it being used effectively, and if teachers feel like that's a good use of their time? Because there's a little bit of controversy over that through the bargaining process.
Yeah, and I, I think that we had gone away from the true meaning, the trusting of teachers, so we, we had a lot of like really tasky work for them to do as opposed to like have a lot of room for innovation. Some buildings required teachers all had to be together in the library, and I think there may have been some values in that, but many people interpreted that as very controlling of their time, and so we've moved away from that.
Good.
So, goal number two, Long Range Facilities. What we will propose and bring to you through the course of the year is What we will propose and bring to you through the course of the year is a new policy that would, and you'll see it's ten years on this. I, I am a believer in five year plans. Ben Lapine School District has had a fabulous long range facility and has changed hands through several superintendents and assistant superintendents and facilities directors. And they meet every five years. I think it is important to bring this more to the community's attention, um, than every ten years. My experience in having a ten year plan is not many people are around that served and remember. It's just a really long interval. It does meet the minimum requirements, but I think we, um, can be more active in terms of how we go about solving the problems of our facilities. We have worked with O D E, I want to give Dave Boland and Lauren Stanley credit for that. We have completed those facility assessments. I know that Sage Architecture, which is the next bullet, they are hired to run the facility assessment process and lead the long range process. So they will be the people that, uh, are generally going to be the maestros there. We did fund that with two TAP grants, um, that covered about eighty percent of the cost. And then a large representative committee between twenty five and thirty will meet monthly, uh, to make a recommendation. It is required, long range planning for facilities. O D E completed those. Why do we see that? Isn't that the same thing we just said?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to the next one. A quick update on committee membership. We have two members of the board now and including those, the number on the committee currently stands at twenty four. I think there's still some balancing to do. Amy did say, Amy Vos, I'm sorry, she is the, uh, Sage person, the architect that will lead the process. She said, I've seen as high as thirty. And you guys will recall, we have asked people to, um, engage on this committee, but they have to come and they have to stay to the end, right? And if they don't, if they miss a meeting, we will have a meeting to catch them up, right? And we will have dinner, we will have breakfast, there will be a lot of different ways we'll do that, but that's the goal. We were going to put time in to making sure that this committee is informed and goes all the way through to ensure the broadest level of input and support with anything subsequent. And so, uh, again, the focus is just on a balanced committee, where, um, most people in the committee hopefully will see someone that, uh, they see as a representative. And, uh, but you know, it's also possible that they could look there and go, oh, I'm not sure that person sees the world the way I do. Well, we cannot have everybody give us a complete A plus for every member because we are seeking a committee that will compromise and that will engage, hear each other and work our way through to a solution. Just one more reminder, the bright orange there, um, this was done to us in two thousand twenty four. And you can see, um, that the, uh, bond load for the district increased in two thousand seventeen with the passage of the two thousand seventeen to two twen- two thousand thirty seven bond. If you go back to two thousand seven, uh, you will note the jump in property taxes at that time. And that was the bond that built Timber Ridge and did, uh, quite a bit of, um, rehab work in some of our buildings. If you go back before two thousand seven, you will see that the district did not carry a very large, uh, tax rate due to facilities. And I think in many ways, as we look at our older buildings, that's probably an underfunding of what the district truly needed, uh, to get across those years. And in fact, you would have to go all the way back to nineteen seventy two, when Periwinkle School was built, to find the last construction of a new school in this district, until Timber Ridge in two thousand seven. So we've got work ahead, um, and excited to do it. I really like the group we have put together. Let's go to the next one. So here's what it looks like. We will, um, we are currently with Amy, working through, um, onsite reviews of the facility assessments. They're making sure that they capture everything. We have, um, director and principal interviews that we are doing as well. And, uh, we want to draft executive summary do on what the condition of facilities are by about September fifth. Are we on track for that, Dave?
Yes, we're on track, but we may push it out to October.
Because we don't bring it to the committee till later.
Right.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, we have considered open houses, that was an original proposal. Uh, you guys, um, have heard a little bit about listening sessions. But we want to make sure that the commit, the community, not just the members of the committee have an opportunity to inform, um, us in what we're doing. Then we go to the meetings and you can see we have, um, roles of the committee, goals, guiding principles. Piper Jaffrey will do yet another bond update. Uh, November data and assessment, assessment review. We are projecting that that will be the time when we will get a new population estimate for the next ten years. And in December, we will be looking at, uh, Mr. Boland's, um, facility condition assessments. February, we'll be looking at district wide concepts and individual school needs. And then we begin to move towards sausage making here. We begin to look at, um, draft plans, how we will work through priorities. And of course, we'll, uh, end up going out, uh, with whatever we decide and build. And we will, um, look at polling. By June, we should present, uh, a draft plan to the board. Hopefully our two new board members here will, um, ensure that there are no big surprises or disagreements between the board and the committee at that time and reconciliation. And some agreement, um, will have occurred by then. And then this is the, um, comprehensive communication plan. So this is, uh, the first draft and we'll come back in September for finalization with probably some more detail. By June two thousand twenty six, the district will increase both the effectiveness and volume of positive communications to district employees, GAPS parents and the broader community to result in an updated communication plan that addresses each of the above. That's just the flat goal. There's a lot of work to be done to build that. Our first step, we are putting out a community perception survey. And we are going to add questions in there to get started in terms of how people receive their information. So, uh, the same survey that can inform the long range committee will also inform our first steps into communication. Uh, one of the things that I would say is we have several different best practices that are sitting in front of us. For example, we know that parents often receive things on their phone, right? And so they don't read them very far. But we also know that anytime this district sends six or seven emails a day to people, they don't read them at all, right? And so we have to really be thoughtful about how we can best capture people's attention. How often do we send things without, um, you know, becoming planes landing at the airport? If you live by the airport, you don't hear them anymore. And so we've seen that happen a couple of times. A parent who has kids in three schools, um, can get a lot of notifications, right? And so we have to be very thoughtful about what we're going to do. On the flip side, if we send like newsletters, we also know that people very seldom read each part of a newsletter to the very end. So we're having to be, uh, really thoughtful and there's going to be some trial and error here to try to figure out what we do. I really liked a couple of things today just around engagement. I like the idea of listening sessions that are focused because then people can come and interact. And, you know, typically you get, uh, a real exchange of ideas and they carry something away. That is not always the case when they look at something on their phone, right? And so there's a lot of work there. But we want to identify, uh, and I'm looking at step three, identify the vehicle, a newsletter or something, think about how often, and develop a community member distribution. And we already have some ideas about how we can begin to build that and, uh, begin to just communicate into the broader community. And so, and again, Chris, I really appreciate, uh, you know, just new thoughts and a new way of looking at it as we come on the board. And then we'll regularly update our progress on that. And so it isn't that we're going to wait till the end of the year and say, hey, we'll do that next year. We are going to be working as we go. And we may have to change some things a little bit once in a while, but that's really, um, it is, it's the effort right now. And as we see something, uh, that's better, we'll, we'll move to that and we'll continue to move forward. Those are the three at this time. And we'll come back with a, hopefully a little more of an action there. And then when we get that first survey, um, we'll know a lot about the work we need to do for both the long range as well as communication. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, change your.
Good evening. So tonight I wanted to talk with you a little bit about some of the funds that we have we receive through S B eleven forty nine. And that is a Senate bill that was passed in nineteen ninety nine. And it established a public purpose charge on electric bills. So if you, you receive power through Portland Electric or Pacific Power, you will see a line on your bill. And, uh, those funds come to us. So those power companies have to take three percent of revenues and use them towards can, like, energy efficient projects. And ten percent of the three percent must go to school districts. And so if a school district receives power through one of those two companies, they're eligible. And so we receive funds. Like this year, we, last year, the total year, we received about three hundred and thirty thousand. And so, um, those funds can be used only for energy efficient projects like lighting, um, upgrading heating and cooling systems. And the project has to be approved by the Oregon Department of Energy. And so the funds can also be used to conduct an audit to see what projects you have in your school buildings that would qualify. And, um, you can use the S B eleven forty nine funds to pay for that audit. And it's great information to inform a long range facility plan. And, um, the fund, the program goes through January one of two thousand thirty six. It was recently extended by the legislature. And between now and the sun setting of the program, we will receive another three point five million. So, um, when we receive those funds, they have to go into a special revenue fund. They can't be expended out of that fund. And then once you have a project that you're approved for, you have to pay for that with other dollars, like capital project funds, bonds, funds, just. And then you get reimbursed once your project's complete. They take the calculation of how much energy they think that project will save. And you get a certain percentage of the cost of the project back. And so, um, all of that is done in collaboration with the Oregon Department of Energy. And when GAPS had their bond program, they utilized all of the S B eleven forty nine funds through now. And I've been working with Oregon Department of Energy to try to find out exactly what happened. Because the funds were, we have one point four million in our S B eleven forty nine fund. And I knew that those funds, some of them had to have been approved for transfer. And so I was working with Kristi Spoon is her name. She's just great with the Oregon Department of Energy. And you may see her if you attend the long range facility. And she, um, went back and discovered that all of the funds that we have in that little sub fund, one point four million, have been approved for transfer out. And so, um, that's why I'm explaining this to you. Because I will be bringing an appropriation change that the board will be able to approve, that it will allow us to transfer those funds into our capital projects fund. Then we'll be able to use them to support Dave's long, long list of capital projects that he has. And we'll be able to use them if Andy wants to conduct an energy audit. And they can be used for any of those type of projects. Once it's in the capital projects, it doesn't have to be an energy conservation project. If you do use it for that, then you're freeing up more future dollars. And so, um, that's why we want, we would want the bond committee to look at energy projects. So we want to make sure we free up those future three point five million dollars. Okay, that, that's all I have. Do you have questions? Oh, I do have one more thing I wanted to tell you. So we are allowed to increase each fund. So the four hundred fund, the capital project fund, we can increase it by ten percent without the budget committee. So the one point four million fits within that appropriation. So I won't have to involve the budget committee. The board will be able to approve the appropriation when I bring that back next month. Any questions?
No, just a comment that, that seems like the rules are awfully calm, polluted with what you can and can't do with the money and what goes against what, but it's kind of a little bit hard to follow.
It i- it is complex.
I think the headline is these have already been expended. And we now have that credit to move it into a fund where we can use that for facility projects. The second thing is this vehicle will be extremely useful for us, like energy pro- projects. If you were to take, I'm just going to guess that some of our buildings have really old lighting. So if we were to move and spend money there or take bond money and allocate it towards that and drop our annual expenditure, I think the savings have a potential to be significant on a year to year basis, right? Which can in turn allow us to offer more things to kids.
We were able to use this program at North Enium to upgrade all the lights in our schools. And then it allowed us to free up additional dollars to support additional programs. So it sounds complex, but it's, uh, additional money for facilities that is really helpful.
Any questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, okay, board member reports. This is again, the time where you, anything you want to say or experience as a board member? If you don't, feel free to pass, but we'll start with you, Stephanie, do you have anything?
I'm just happy to be here. I don't really have anything.
It's good to see you in person.
Thank you.
What you, Chris? All right, Sean?
Good, I don't have anything this time.
Brad?
I can feel my inner Roger coming out. Sorry, it's an inside school board joke. But we just had a, a, a training with Vince from O S B A. And, uh, I've been on the board for four years, so he was able to confirm some things and we learned some new things. And so that was really, really helpful. And we've got another one coming up next month, I believe, another two and a half hour session. So that'll be good to get some more, more of that. And one of the things that he kind of drove home, um, is boards don't do operational things. We don't get into the classroom, we don't teach, we don't discipline, we pass policy. And so one of the things that, that I want to try to focus on in a policy and I'd like to talk to the board about at some point, uh, is how to improve student outcomes. We have something coming a little bit later on the cell phones, the cellphone ban. I do believe that that will help student outcomes, but that's something that's been forced upon us, not something that we looked at doing in the future. And so one of the things I'd like to look at, and I've, I've discussed this a bit with Andy, uh, in meetings, is to talk about having a mentor program with volunteers that would go into the classrooms, especially at elementary level, that would come in, help students read. As I understand the, the, uh, data that's out there, and, and we have two educators here that can help confirm this, that if, if students don't learn to read well by the third grade and at third grade level, they struggle significantly for the rest of their. they struggle significantly for the rest of their time in school. Right? So my thought process is, is to really try to focus volunteers. So there's no cost to the district, to come in, to read with students, to spend time with them, to help them get at grade level. And I think if we made this across the district in, in grades K through three, it would make a huge difference. So I'd like to, at some point, discuss this and see about how we can move that forward. That's all I got.
Okay. And yes.
Point of order, um, want to recognize that we have at her own initiative, the West Albany Student Representative is here tonight watching the meeting.
Oh.
Zaya is here.
Okay.
Welcome.
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 The start next time, I'm guessing? Yeah.
No speech?
All right, well, we're.
On the spot there.
Yeah, we'll look forward to having you sitting at the big table next time. Okay, and I also don't have a report. School hasn't started yet. I don't have much. Okay. Next thing is.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Okay, so again, we're going to pass these all at once. Uh, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, uh, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. There's nothing under old business. There are no other reports. New business, uh, board policy, personal electronic devices. So there's been a lot of, we've, well, so you guys have it in front of you. We've talked about this a little bit, but the governor had an executive order on cell phones. We had a, uh, update on the last meeting and now we need to approve the policy. Any thoughts? Brad?
Can I just, uh,
Please.
give you a little bit of background here? You will recall that this was, uh, moving through the legislature and it couldn't get, um, over the bar. And, um, other issues in the state budget, uh, overtook this as the session drew to a close. The transportation plan became, you know, a really, uh, threw a lot of energy. One of the big issues here, we were invited to speak on this, uh, every week with education policy, uh, advocates, was, uh, that schools really broke on, um, what the instructional day meant. Whether it was a ban during classes or was there, whether it was a ban including lunch for the entire day. And that didn't, we, there just could not be energy there. We do have, um, an executive order now which says the instructional day. So lunch is now a part of that. And so we were working on that. You will recall that the policy and the, um, the governor's executive order said that we had to have this in place by October. The policy in place, it had to be implemented, not later than January 1. And so most districts are where you guys are saying, why would we change midstream? Let's just start the year with this policy. To do that, you are going to have a one reading only to implement this policy tonight. Right? So this would be the reading and then it will go. If we waited until September, we would be without a policy as we tried to do it. And so just remember all those things as we move forward. There are some questions here and I know Bruce is chomping at the bit to answer questions. He's met with, he's met with the principals, particularly in the upper grades. But, uh, if there's any questions about this, because this is, um, somewhat different than what Vince just presented us on the role of boards or even the role of government. Right? This becomes, uh, very much managing a very specific thing in detail. Right?
Right.
But we also have an executive order that is telling us to do it.
Yeah, I mean, when the governor micromanages, it kind of pushes on everybody else to micromanage, right? And I've said, I'll say it again, I just think this is, should be a local decision, not a, you know, I'm disappointed in our state leadership and getting involved at this level, uh, is what it is. A couple of things though, uh, one of them is, uh, it's, you're gonna, your teachers are gonna have a variety of opinions about this and a variety of appetite to enforce it. But I gotta beg us teachers to be consistent because who's gonna hurt his kids if we're inconsistent with how we apply the policy? If teacher A is lenient and teacher B is strict and kid does the same thing in teacher A's class and teacher B's class and gets in trouble from teacher B, that kid is, we're doing that kid a disservice. So I know teachers are gonna feel like they're enforcing something they don't believe in, but we gotta be consistent, uh, in our building. So please do that. Uh, and then the other thing, I, I would think I read or understand this policy. The, the executive order doesn't allow us to do any, uh, exclusionary discipline for violation of the policy. However, if the behavior rises to the level of insubordination, defiance and disrespect, that's not this. That's another behavior that has its own set of consequences, which could include other types of discipline, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. I wanted to make sure I understood that and that's good. Okay, that's for me, that's it. I know, I never remember if I'm supposed to do the motion and then the.
You're the chair, it's your meeting.
Well, I like to just, I like to do the discussion before we do the motion, so. Any other discussion questions?
I think it's gonna be really important to hit the, um, information for parents and community about safety. Uh, make sure that gets out as soon as school starts.
When you say safety, you're talking about more broad than this?
Like what are we gonna do if there's an emergency in school and your kid doesn't have a phone to call you?
Oh, okay.
That cause, because, because a lot of people seem to think that they're kept safe by their devices. I'm not so sure that's true, but people do want to know what's happening with their kids. And we need to cover that base really well.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So I guess it wasn't super clear in the policy. I was reading through the AR trying to clarify. Is it, is it gonna be based building by building on, well, on where they're gonna be kept? Are they all gonna be kept on person or they're gonna have lockers where they could choose to leave them? Or is it gonna be kept in a classroom in a cubby thing?
Just a, just a few things that I want to make sure. So we're, we're defining the, the instructional day as as soon as the students walk into the building. So if, if classes start at 7:40, but the kids get into the cafeteria at 7:30, as soon as they walk in the building, that's when we're gonna start. Phones will be off and away at that point in time. They can store them in their locker, in their pocket or in their backpack. And if we see a phone in a student's pocket, we're not gonna try to confiscate a phone in that situation. Right? Off and away is what the expectation is gonna be. Um, and that'll include passing time, lunchtime and obviously in instructional spaces. From a purpose perspective, uh, I can agree with the governor's philosophy in the sense that this is a better way to keep kids focused and engaged. It's a way to increase conversations between students where we're not buried in our phones. Um, or during lunch or passing time, um, doing the, the scroll of doom, right? Where you're just scrolling your reels and not engaging at all. That's a skill that kids have kind of lost over the course of time. Many young adults have lost that over the course of time. And I think that overall, in the long run, this is gonna be a benefit to, to kids. Um, and a way for us to engage in, in great conversation and getting along with each other. But not, not to say it's gonna be a challenge, um, implementing the policy. Uh, Ryan, I would agree with you 100% that it needs to be a universal expectation amongst the adults. So kids have a consistent expectation and consistent follow through, uh, and that's gonna be essential. Yes.
Is there a ban already in place at Calipoya? I think I've heard that.
There.
So we have their experience to work with.
There, there, each of the middle school, or well, each of, all of the schools had situations where, hey, it's, it's permitted during lunch or during passing time. The middle schools mostly had that off and away during the school day. Some was, hey, buses get here at 7:15, we let them come in the cafeteria. They were able to use their phones in the cafeteria until class started at 7:40 or 7:50. So that's gonna be a little change in practice for some of the schools.
Okay.
I, I warned you my inner Roger was coming out, so I got, I got a few things. One of them is, at Calipoya was the first time I had the experience with the cellphone ban. And we walked through, the three of us were, were walking through there. Um, and one of the things that stopped me dead in my tracks was a sign on the wall. And so what I'm asking for is the addition of a signage requirement, uh, in each of the schools. Basically stating, you know, cell phones off, um, you know, no cell phones, that sort of thing. So it reinforces to not only the students, but also the teachers, because I think there's a real risk here, uh, like has been stated, that not all teachers will, will buy into this. And so we really need to try to reset the culture. I think it's gonna be relatively simple to do so at elementary and middle. I think it's gonna be a bit more difficult at the high school level. I think that's where the challenge is really gonna lie.
Yeah, the, the, each, each level of school has a little bit of a different challenge. The elementary school, it's smart watches. And while their phones are off and away, their parents are always in contact with their, their student via a smartwatch. I have a couple of requests and emails that I'm, I'm waiting to respond to. And it's just that, it's, my student has an Apple Watch and I can track them with their Apple Watch. And I want to be able to contact them at any point in time. So it becomes more of a, a parent-student dynamic versus a, a student-to-student dynamic as you move up to middle and high school. So there, there'll be unique challenges at e- at each level. But again, the universal expectation and, and kind of sharing what the purpose of the policy is all about. Um, and again, it's about in- increasing the level of engagement of students to teachers, but also student to student and having fewer distractions during the instructional day, so.
Right. And, and I know we don't have any say on the AR portion of this, but some, hopefully some thought will be given to what, what would you do when a teacher is willfully disregarding and how that procedure would look? Again, we have no say in that. Just asking that thought be given, uh, should that arise? So that, that's what I have.
Absolutely.
So if, if we pass this, uh, I don't know if we can add a signage. Or I could just accept your word.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have a pretty broad communication plan. Uh, we will be sending out communication directly from the district to all families. Each building will communicate that independently in their, uh, home to school communicate, or school to home communication. These, it will be covered in beginning of the year expectation lessons with students.
But I'm talking about in the wall, in the halls, on the walls.
We'll have signage.
Okay, yeah, if you'll do that for me, then I'm good to go.
Not a problem.
Okay.
You know, we usually limit our board member, our student members are not, we don't limit them, but they usually stick with sports and activities. But I'd actually be interested in their feedback on this maybe at the next meeting.
Your first assignment has been given.
I'm sure there'll be plenty of opportunity for feedback, Director Mattingly. I think that'll be a willful share.
Yeah, I kind of thought it might be.
Aren't you glad you came?
Okay, any other discussion on the cellphone policy? Okay, not hearing any. I would, uh, uh, entertain a motion to approve policy JFCEB, personal electronic devices.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve policy JFCEB, personal electronic devices as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes. All right, the other business is information only.
Let the party begin.
So do I have?
English learners report?
Do, that's just there to, for us to read or we, no, we're on public comment, right?
Yeah, the, the English language learners' report, that's, um, that's developed by the state. Um, it, it's included in here as an attachment. Uh, it's just a comprehensive report of the, of our English language learners, their performance, um, across state testing, um, identification for, for talented and gifted services. And it's a state level report that's put together every year for your information.
Yeah, it wasn't about all, I, I scanned it for gaps, I couldn't find anything.
It's, it's not, it's not district specific, it's an overall state report.
Okay. And then you also have the AR that goes with the policy we just passed?
Yes.
And you might amend that to include signage at some point or no?
Uh, the, the AR is about, um, exceptions.
It's a deletion of the current.
Oh, you're deleting the current AR, gotcha. Oh, yeah.
The current policy.
The new AR hasn't been written yet, is that correct?
So there's the policy now, that's only the policy, we don't have an AR.
There is no AR.
Yeah, the AR is.
That AR is future coming.
Yeah, because a lot of it was in the AR. Um, our old AR got moved into the policy and so now there's no longer an AR. So it'll just sit just with, um, the, uh, policy, no AR. And the form is a district form, um, because we didn't make that. The recommendation from OSBA was to have it as a district form, but we have taken forms out of ARs because they're really hard to manage and update. And so we keep those as district forms, which is mentioned in the policy when you read through that it's available.
And this is an atypical board policy in the sense that there are procedures included within the policy. That is not typical. However, the executive order from the governor required us to include these details in the policy itself. So this is kind of an atypical situation.
Okay. I feel like I asked this last time, Chris, but is there a blurb I'm supposed to read on the public comment? Like about the three minutes? I don't see it.
I'll print it, I don't have it for you.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't memorize it. Something about only, you only have three minutes, you can't criticize staff by name, only organizations or us. And I think that, and be, you know, be nice, be respectful. And we're not supposed to comment back, but if you entice us enough, you might trick us into it. All right? Okay, uh, so first up is Beth.
Barkstead.
Barkstead.
One of the superintendent's goals is to develop comprehensive communication plan, including to the greater community. Well, recently, two things have happened that I think were just wonderful about communicating with the general public, of which I am a member. And so I thought I'd talk about something that works. And Jane Nafziger, you're the first one. Your, um, presentation last meeting about, oh shoot, now I have a whole blank, about, um, oh, the buses, the cost of the buses. I don't know if you thought about how to appeal to the general public when you planned that. But as I was listening to it, I thought, this is wonderful. You had photos to engage, um, the non-professionals. You had graph and tables that, um, were visual and communicated with each other. And at the end, you had four steps that anybody could understand that the board was gonna go through. I mean, it was great. I thought it was a model of how to communicate to people like me in the public. I can't say the same for that whole thing about all the board. I was gone on that unless you have some animation or something, but that was wonderful. And, um, Sean Taylor. There was an article in the, um, Democrat Herald about the board and communication. And the last paragraph was a quote by you that I thought was a wonderful example of how did it succinctly, succinctly, um, create, um, shoot, succinctly present a situation. You had someone that you couldn't, you were so shocked that they didn't know about something. And I don't know who that is. But you said, "They can talk to me, we've got all this stuff online that's available. How come people don't know? Well, there you go, that's the problem right there. How come they don't know even though there are all these other things available?" So I thought that was well put. And I look forward to great communication with the board. And I wanted to thank all of you. I have a hearing disability. My hearing aids are turned up as far as they'll go. And if you talk directly into your mic, I can hear you so much better. And that's almost everybody, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next is Clyde Rude.
Thank you, members of the board, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, the OSBA elections have once again come upon us. Time is for the nominations, which gives someone the ability to run, uh, for the OSBA Board of Directors. If you were to nominate me or even vote for me in November, December, I have a few things that I'm trying to continue with, um, based off of the last time I was on the board. I would like to continue researching, reaching out to Region 10 board members, communication channels, um, open door policy. This will be done by attending board meetings on a regular basis. Um, I would just pick a few out a month and, and attend. Continue working on the policy portal. Policy portal was something that I brought up, um, the first time that I was in the, in the OSBA. It would give, um, it's a, it would be a new portal, new technology, giving board members the ability to get the, um, the policy updates first. It would also give you the ability to cross-reference policies amongst other school districts, enhancing your ability to make better decisions on policies. It's still new, since I've been out for a year, I don't know where they're currently at on it. Another thing I'm gonna continue doing is building bridges with legislators and board members to establish an annual Region 10 legislative outreach meeting. For those of you that were here last year, I started that and when the election was final. And when the election was final, they decided not to pursue it. I was a little heartbreak-broken over it. Um, Region Ten is behind the curve on that with the other regions. Um, new business, it doesn't really apply to Albany, but, um, I noticed that Region Ten didn't have Rural Caucus representation. And Region Ten is distinctively different from any other region. We have a county that established as a school district, which is the Lincoln County School District. If all five of those schools were independent school districts, we would meet the criteria on the Rural Caucus for Representation with no problem. So I'm in the process of changing the bylaws with the Rural Caucus and the OSBA to accept Region Ten as a member, ha- having an officer on the Rural Caucus. Those are just small goals. Um, but I'm pretty sure if elected, um, I would, um, get a great number of these done within the two years. Thank you for your time. Um, hopefully, um.
When's the deadline, when's the election deadline?
So nominations are this month and next month, so the nomination has to be filed by September thirtieth. And then the voting would happen in November, December timeframe.
I assume Chris will keep us up, up to speed on that.
I'll, I'll send your emails.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is it. I assume we didn't have any online or anything, or you would have told me, so. No more public comment? What does my identity say happens next? I have a feeling it's.
I know this one.
Uh, yeah?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.